Ms. Raymond.
Here.
Ms. Timmons.
Here.
Ms. Hohensy.
Here.
Ms. Van Twyver.
Here.
Mr. Guarino is here. Other attendees, Dr. Mosley.
Here.
Uh, Dr. McKinney.
Here.
Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Mr. Donovan. Uh, Ms. Sweeney.
Here.
Mr. Gillis.
Here.
And we also have Lisa Gingras with us, also.
And, uh, Mr. Atwell.
Uh, Will's?
Mr. Atwell.
Mr. Edwell, also. Atwell, I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, we will have, uh, Mr. Guarino, the clerk, will read the prayer. And could Ms. Sweeney, our representative from South, please lead us in the pledge? Thank you. Please stand.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding, which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and clarity, charity for all, and so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Oden.
Yes.
Point of order, I know that we have this, uh, a presentation coming up with, with Ms. Gingras. And I believe that I had asked for something that's very much related to this topic, which is later on in the agenda. Is there a way that we can combine them at the same time, instead of having one at the beginning and one at the end?
No, because they're two different items. And what you asked for, uh, under new business is going to policy. So, no, they, they can't be combined tonight. Are there any?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, you're out of order.
You've already determined that it's going to policy without any discussion?
Um.
I mean, what part of having a conversation at the board matters if you're arbitrarily going to do stuff like that?
I'm not going to get into an argument with you. Policy B E D B. New business items will be referred to a committee by the president with the board's concurrence for analysis and recommendation.
I don't think that's, isn't that a curricu- or I just, excuse me, but is it a curriculum committee, or is it a policy committee?
I, I think-
Football is-
I think I just told you it was going to policy. Thank you. Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? No? If not, if there is none, the consent agenda is accepted. Uh, is there any communication outside the consent agenda? Okay. We are now at the public question and comment period, which is limited to items- On the agenda.
Point of order, we didn't vote by roll call as we were required to for the consent agenda. I move that we accept the consent agenda that's on the-
Second.
Thank you. You want to call the-
Uh, on the, uh, motion to accept, uh, the consent agenda. Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
Ms. Oden.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Ms. Raymond.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Timmons.
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy.
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver.
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Uh, the motion carries to accept the consent agenda.
Is there any communication outside the consent agenda? Dr. Mosley?
Madam Chair, just for point of clarification, when would you like to do the recognition presentation? I noticed that we went to the consent agenda without doing the presentation. The presentation was listed first.
My fault. Thank you.
Okay, just clarifying.
We'll go to that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Gingras and Mr. Atwell. And Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Over the last several months, um, a committee of people, which is listed in the next slide, got together, looked at most recent, um, information regarding concussions and academic progress. And we worked as a team to develop a protocol for any student in the district that suffers from a concussion that's been diagnosed by a healthcare professional. We currently have a return to play policy, uh, protocol, but we don't have a return to learn protocol. And we felt that that was a piece of the puzzle missing, particularly with all the new, um, information around concussions. So that is the basis of this presentation. Thank you. As Ms. Fitzpatrick identified, we currently, in the athletic world of things, have a return to play protocol. Um, and we've heard a lot in terms of our student athletes and concussions. But some of you may remember this fall, when we came to discuss and revise the concussion for student athletes policy, we had one of our high school students speak specifically to this. Um, what about students who may not be athletes and how this affects their classroom time and their learning environment? So it was something that I had already been working on, so that kind of is, was the catalyst a little bit that, that pushed us forward. So the committee was made up, both assistant superintendents, um, Dr. McKinney and Ms. Fitzpatrick were on the committee. We had representation from the administration from each of the three levels. Principal Atwell from Elm Street, as well as an assistant principal from Charlotte Ave Elementary, Teresa Keen, and assistant principal from Nashua South, Lisa McQuestion, was part of the process. We also included our head athletic trainer. Um, again, Mr. Jerry Holland has been the head athletic trainer for over 25 years here in the district and has the athletic side of things. And even though we deal with the athletic side so much, we also were, were helping students with their academic piece. And then, of course, we also included Ms. Gina Lopez, who is our head school nurse, uh, on the committee. I think that's everybody up there. And you. And me, sorry. So first of all, what is return to learn? Throughout the presentation and the documents, you will see the acronym, the acronym RTL. Anytime you see that, it's referring to the return to learn. So the return to learn protocol is a five-stage gradual academic protocol for students with concussions. And we'll look very specifically at those stages in a little bit. It's really important that everybody is clear on the fact that this is for all students. This is not just for our student athletes. And it's regardless of how concussions have been sustained. So students do not have to receive the concussion at school. They don't have to receive it participating in extras, extracurricular activities related to school. Could be a student got into a car accident over the weekend. And we get documentation that they have sustained a concussion. So this would apply to them. The return to learn provides individualized progression through the stages. It's all about each individual student and their journey. There is constant feedback between teachers, students, parents, and the full concussion management team, which we'll see in a second. And the guiding principles through all of the research, through all of this and the development of the return to learn, is that students should be attending school. Once they are able to accomplish simple tasks of getting up in the morning and getting ready for school without their symptoms getting worse, they should be attending school for the variety of social aspects, as well as being in the classroom and absorbing information just by listening. Students want to work below their symptom threshold. They may not be asymptomatic, but they want to make sure that their symptoms aren't getting worse. And then there's a gradual increase to the workload. Why do we need this? We can easily see if someone has a broken leg, dislocated shoulder, needs surgery for a tumor, or something like that. But concussions are invisible. If someone has a concussion, you don't know exactly what they're feeling inside. You're not sure how foggy they are, um, how hard they're having, how much time, how hard of a time they are having concentrating or focusing. Symptoms affect students in a variety of ways. Obviously physically, cognitively, as well as emotionally. And it affects their sleep patterns. So a student who hasn't been able to sleep is definitely going to have some, some issues during class the next day. So our return to learn protocol provides a systematic way to offer and monitor accommodations that a student may need. Each student is not going to need all of the accommodations all of the time. That's why the return to learn is very, very individualized. So the return to learn is similar to the return to play, where there's a gradual return to a playing field or a court, or something like that. So who's involved? This is our concussion management team. Through our committee, it was unanimous that the school nurse needed to be sort of the point person. So they would be, in each of the buildings, would be the co-leader of the concussion management team. And they would sort of be the driving force behind it. Obviously, the student needs to be involved, because we don't know, we can't see how the student is doing. They need to be able to share that information with us. The parents and the family, the classroom teachers, school administrators, school counselors, case managers, be it a student with a, a special ed individual education plan or a 504 and ELL, that case manager should be involved. The healthcare professional who diagnosed the concussion. So that could be an outside doctor. That could be one of our athletic trainers. That could be the school nurse, as well as neuropsychologist, when it's necessary. Not every student is going to need that level of assistance. So the other co-leader would be dependent on that individual student in that individual building. So it could be the school counselor. It could be the school administrator. It could be that student's special education case manager. So that would be on a case-by-case basis. The resp- return to learn is initiated when the school is provided with written documentation of a diagnosed concussion from a healthcare professional. Again, that could be an athletic trainer. It could be the school nurse. It could be primary care physician. It could be the doctor at convenient M.D. So any written documentation. So the return to learn, how it progresses? So the first step, again, is that written notification that a student has a concussion. If we never receive that, we have no idea that it's a true concussion. School nurse at that point will activate the return to learn by notifying all of the team members. Again, including counselors, administrators, parents, teachers. Accommodations are provided for the student if necessary. As we walk through the stages, you'll see the differences there. Each day, there will be daily reporting by both the teachers and the student in conjunction with the school nurse. Each day, the school nurse, in collaboration with all of the data that, that he or she has collected, will determine whether the student is ready to move to the next stage, stays where they are for another day, or even possibly regresses backwards. Because sometimes, when students move forward too fast, the, their symptoms might get pretty severe again. So they might have to go backwards a little bit. Most important part of return to learn, just as in return to play, is that journey is individualized based on that student alone. Throughout the whole process, that we compare that student's cognitive ability only to that student prior to their concussion. And then from one day to the next. The other thing that's important to know with the return to learn is that pro- progression through the protocol is based on whether or not the symptoms worsen, not whether they are completely eliminated. So let's go through the five stages. So the first stage, we call the black stage. And again, each of these stages, we listed an expected duration. That's only an average based on the research. It's not a hard and fast, you know, after two days, you need to move on. This stage is staying at home and resting. The important part we did hear is we said, okay, when are you ready to move on? And what information are we going to use? So as I said a little bit ago, if a student can get up independently, get ready for school, and make it to school without the symptoms getting significantly worse, that student's ready to come back to school. Again, compared to how they could do that prior to the concussion. You know, elementary school students or students with disabilities, obviously, may not ever have been able to do that independently. So however they could do it prior to the concussion is what you need to compare it to. And that's solely how the student feels and what the parents are observing. The next stage is the red stage. This is where the student's ready to come to school. They come to school, they sit in class, and they listen. They're not doing any classwork. They're not doing any homework. They're not taking any tests or anything like that. But they're encouraged to participate, um, to the level that they can stand. They'll move on when they can sit in class for a full day without their symptoms worsening. And again, the information collected will be a symptom checklist completed between the student and the school nurse, teacher reports, as well as parent input. So once they can sit in class for one full day, they move on to the orange stage, where at this point, they're encouraged to complete 50% of their work, but no tests or large assignments. Student can have academic accommodations for these assignments. Maybe it's shorter. Maybe the reading passages are shorter, things like that. Once the student can complete half of their work for two days, again, without worsening symptoms, now they're ready to move on. Same data is used to make that decision. Getting closer. So the yellow stage, at this point, they're doing 100% of their classwork and homework, but tests can be modified. Maybe they need to be shortened. Maybe they need to take place in a quieter environment, one-on-one. Maybe they're on colored paper. There's a variety of adjustments that could be made. Once the student can complete their work for two full days without worsening symptoms at the 50% level, and that student has met and come up with a plan with the concussion management team leader to start making up some of the work that they missed, then they are ready to move on. And again, the data used is the same as before. Then we're at the last stage, and this is full return to learn. They're 100% doing their classwork and homework. They're working to make up important assignments. They're taking tests and working on projects and things like that, as though they had never had the concussion or been in the protocol. Once in a while, we have very severe cases where a formal 504 or an IEP may be needed, depending on the severity of a student's symptoms and whether the, their recovery is much longer than average. And of course, the question comes up, how does return to learn and return to play come into effect? We have it written into our protocol that no student should be returning to full contact activity of any kind unless they are also 100% re-engaged in the classroom. Students might be at various stages of each one. They might be further along in their academics than they are in their physical activity, or vice versa. Both, return to play involves a gradual increase to physical activity, athletic practice, and full competition. Whereas the return to learn involves a gradual increase to their cognitive ability. I know you all have the, the full text of the return to play, excuse me, the return to learn, as well as, I believe you have the forms that would be used in the implementation. So I don't know. And the flyer, also. There is a, um, a tri-fold brochure flyer on concussion awareness and an introduction to the return to play. I apologize, I keep saying that. Kind of my, my real world. A brochure that, an introduction that we created that would help to educate teachers, administrators, and most importantly, parents on this protocol, as well as concussions in general. Are there any questions?
Thank you, yeah. I was just going to ask. Ms. Van Twyver.
Uh, this return to learn process was completely designed here in this district, or?
It, it was based on research and workshops that I had attended, as well as some, um, national-level classes that I've taken and other research from some of the medical professionals.
And, um, does this need to be referred to the policy for a policy on return to learn?
The reason that we called it a protocol is because it's a process of steps that we take to ensure that our students are being serviced to the best of our ability. I'm not sure that it actually qualifies for a policy, because it's a protocol. And this is already happening, to some extent, in schools. This just allows for more consistency and codifies it for all the schools and all the teachers.
So administration does not feel necessary to, uh, develop a policy on this?
I would, I guess the question is, it, there's a difference between policy and procedure. If we want to, we refer it back to policy, and the board wants to take a vote on that, then that's the board's decision. I will say that this is something that, you're talking about students' health. Talking about their, their, you know, mental welfare. So this is a, a procedure that is research-based, that's for kids who have suffered concussions. And we want to have some type of procedure to make sure that they're safe at home and in school. So we want to call it policy. I wouldn't necessarily call it policy. I would call it more a safety procedure that we want to make the board aware of.
But didn't we do something for a return to, uh, play?
We have, to the best of my knowledge, we have a policy on concussion management for student athletes. But our return to play protocol is not a school board policy.
But isn't there some mention of that?
It refers to the return to play protocol, but I do not believe the protocol itself is policy.
Okay, but maybe there's something needs to be said, that there is this protocol, and that same policy?
We could do that. I think one of the things we wanted to be sure about is that people understand that this is not just for athletes. It's for all students. And that concussion policy is specifically in reference to student athletes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gingras. Good presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, as always, Ms. Gingras. Always well-prepared. You anticipate our questions. Thank you. I had a similar line of questioning, is Ms. Van Twyver relative to policy? I think, uh, I think it's an excellent piece of work that you folks have done. I think it has immediate and strong value to the district and to the students. And I really appreciate it that it's elementary through high school, or any student anywhere, so if they were preschool or whatever, these would be followed. I do agree that, I think there should be a board policy that says, we value, we are very careful about this, and we've asked the administration to implement procedures to ensure that the safety of our students and that they can return to class or to sports safely. I, I think there needs to be, I don't want to call it a preamble, but it's almost like a preamble, because you've done the, the legwork here with the implementation relative to procedures. Procedures, by definition, follow policy. Their board establishes policy. Administration implements a procedure to see that policy is, becomes in effect. So I think you've, you've done the backend work before the policy. I would encourage the board to move this to policy. I don't think it's a, an extreme amount of work to come up with something around, uh, you know, give the umbrella necessary for the work you've done. I also have a question. You mentioned, in some cases, you may have a neuropsychologist or an outside doctor, uh, involved in, uh, students' return. And I'm just going to keep that as a generic return, because I think that's your intention. So who would be responsible for the cost of these outside physicians? Is, if we require it, do we have to pay for it?
I don't think at, at that point, and that's why it's, it's in the concussion management team as if needed. That might be something where a family decides, you know, my child isn't recovering from this concussion as quickly as they should be. Their symptoms are the same for a longer period of time. That the family, at that point, would look for an outside neuropsychologist or another physician specializing in concussions to assist them. So that, our protocol simply implies that if that happens and we receive documentation, then they would then be included in sort of the feedback loop on how it's going.
So I would offer the, uh, feedback that suggests that perhaps you update your presentation, your documentation, to include that that's a parental choice.
Okay.
In the long run. And the last comment I have has to do with, and I'm only picking on the nurses, because they're totally front-line, but in general, is there professional development required to our staff surrounding this? Has that been scheduled? Has it been prepared, or?
We were beginning with, uh, professional development for all of the building administrators to make sure they knew about the protocol and how the protocol was going to work. And we were talking about, and have not established dates, plans for all staff members to be trained in the protocol. We haven't set the date yet, but that is our plan in that by next September, the latest, all staff will be trained.
There's no way to get it done by the end of this school year?
That's our, that's our goal. But I'm not going to say we're going to do something that may not be possible. But our goal is to have it done before the end of the school year.
Okay, terrific. Absolutely. Great job. Thank you.
Ms. Hohensy.
Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Gingras, for presenting this. I think it's good that you listened to a parent. I mean, I remember when that parent came in, and that this is the response to it. I also agree with Mr. Kaufman, or maybe Mrs. Van Twyver, that we ought to have a policy just alerting parents to know that this is in there. And as Mr. Kaufman says, give the parent the flexibility whether they want to go into this protocol or, or not. You know, so they have, they don't feel pressured into, um, just taking it if they feel like they're able to, to control it on their own. To me, it seems, if, if you're really concussed, it seems a lot to come back as quickly as this look. For the black or the red stage, some of those early stages, I, it, it seems rather risky that, you know, with the fluorescent lights and everything would trigger it, coming back. But I would appreciate if it went to policy and that we've got a policy identifying it like work, a return to play, return to learn. They're, they're comparable, and they should be identified for the students.
And just to clarify again, the, um, timeframes are just averages. Some students will move more slowly, some will move more quickly.
Okay. Is there anybody on this side that has a question or a comment?
Thank you. Um, I'm wondering, as we're talking about policy versus procedure, I'm wondering if, um, i- if the return to play policy maybe could be modified to incorporate this, as opposed to like having two separate ones? I don't know, but that's just a thought. Um, I appreciate it. I think it's great. I appreciate that we have, um, the young children as well, um, involved in this. And I, I think it's a great plan, so.
Ms. Gingras would like to respond to that.
Yeah, I'd just like to respond to your first question. We did talk about potentially incorporating it with the return to play, but decided to have a completely separate protocol, because this applies to all students. Whereas the return to play only refers to our student athletes. So we wanted to make sure that that was very clear.
Dr. Mosley?
Sometimes, and it just happens, that there are, um, students who are not athletes that, uh, experience concussions at school for a variety of reasons, whether they're outside playing in recess or anything like that. So this is a little bit of a unique, where this is applicable to all of the kids. So it could be elementary school. It could be middle school. And they can be non-athletes as well. So that's why I think it's a little, little trickier than just return to play. So, um, certainly if the board feels that referring it back to policy or creating a policy around it will certainly amendable to that. Just keep in mind that there is a backlog of policies that currently exist. And my concern is that this doesn't come to the policy committee until sometime in, in June, and then it's, it's way too late. And I don't really want to risk any student's, um, you know, safety as a result of, of just kind of a backlog of policy. So I just, I put that out to the board. But ultimately, I'll defer to the board in terms of its decision to refer it back to policy or not.
Mr. Guarino.
Yeah, I, I have a question. And if, uh, if a student gets a concussion outside of school, do you still invoke this policy? And maybe you already said it, and I wasn't paying attention.
The idea, the idea is, as soon as the school receives written documentation that a student has sustained a concussion, and this goes back to the, the parental option to invoke the, the protocol, that's when we would put the wheels in motion.
Yeah, I think I did see that up there.
Yeah.
But I did want to say this about policies and procedures. If we, we make a policy out of everything, then we don't really give the staff much flexibility. And, and I understand the concerns, you know, about notifying parents. But we also have to give, give the administration some flexibility. have to give, give the administration some flexibility so that they could, they could adjust these things without having to write a whole policy and go through the whole procedure all the time. So, so having best practices and having, and having policies in place is, is the next best thing, to have a policy for everything, because once you have a policy, we have our policies, then, then we're, we're sort of straitjacketing the, the administration. So it's nice to have procedures and, and, and best practices that, that they can, you know, and the industries change and, and things change, and sometimes they come, come with new procedures that are better than others. So I, I, I think it's a great idea to have this in place, and I think you, you did a great job. I think the administration did a great job on this.
Ms. Van Twyver?
I have two things. Number one, our policies have procedures also, but I believe that the intent here is to have this as a administrative procedure, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to make that clear, that our policies do have procedures attached to them sometimes. The other thing is, I'd like to request that these handouts be attached to the minutes of this meeting and filed online, and if you could send a copy of the, of the handout to the board, please.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like?
Oh.
Oh, Mr. Mosher. Sorry.
Still here, and I'm listening to the whole thing. And I think that, Ms. Gingrich, our mathematical prowess has come through again in this, this I think that, you know, having been through this with one of my grandchildren, I think that it is imperative that we have the procedures as, as administrative code, and to clarify, you know, when we have a, a situation that has occurred outside of the school, and outside of the school venue, that we separate the, the information that we will be requesting, I don't think that policy is good, because if you've ever read a credit card acceptance statement on a, a small print, we don't want to get that much involved with the policy as far as this is concerned. Because I feel like, like the others, that this is a procedure that is, takes place administratively and not through policy, because every time somebody sneezes, we'll have to change the policy. So I think we should stay away from the, be, you know, maybe overview by the policy committee, and then pass on. But I don't believe that there should be anything other than administrative rules. And I'd like to ask also, has, is any of this codified in any way through the, the state or the, the Board of Ed, you know, master rules or anything?
There, there isn't any national or state-level return to learn policy or procedure, but this was, this information was based on case studies, this was based on medical research out of Dartmouth-Hitchcock, this was based on national standards. So there's a lot of, a lot of information behind the scenes that this was written from.
And I'd also like, I'd also like to say that this actually puts Nashua ahead of the curve.
I would definitely say so. I think that it's a tremendous work, and I congratulate all you people for what you've accomplished there. It's a wonderful piece of administrative work, and we should write it up as administrative and not, not policy. Thank you.
Ms. Ohensie?
Thank you. My understanding is the handbook is the summary or has a lot of our policies in it. And the only reason why I think it, I still think it should be a policy, even if it's short, just to identify to parents in the handbook, or the students in the handbook, if they have an incident at home and their child's concussed, they won't know there's a policy in the school to come looking for it. If it's at least identified with a one or two line to say that this is something that they can address with the school with a protocol, then they would, they would come and they would start to work with the district. I didn't know that there was anything like this before, because there wasn't. So now, all of a sudden, there is. How did the parents know that this has happened? So that's my concern.
Can I just address that? So, and again, I'm not on the board, I'm just, what I would suggest is, if possible, writing a very simple policy that states the National School District has a return to learn and a separate return to play protocol. Is that what you were just saying? Something that simple?
Something very simple, but explains what return to learn and return to play is about, concussions, and, just briefly.
But the protocol itself would not be part of the policy.
No, 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 I don't want to infringe on that. And you could even draft it and propose it how you think it should be worded, because I think the parents need to have that to say, oh, that's a possibility. Right now, they don't know they have that possibility.
Mr. Kaufman?
I move that this return to play, return to class, protocol, procedure be referred to the policy committee and be brought forward to policy no later than the end of March of 2018.
Second. Okay. We're going to have a roll call. Discussion? A discussion, okay.
I, I do have one, one comment. I believe we had a discussion, we had some work done on concussions a while ago, and I think it's there in that policy, that you just mentioned, the fact that we have these two, two protocols.
But again, that policy specifically is entitled Concussions for Student Athletes.
All right, you're right. Oh, you're so smart. I've forgotten, I've forgotten.
Dr. Mosley?
Madam Chair, just a couple of things. If the, understanding what the motion is, that means that there are policies in the queue, so to speak, that, what we're saying then by that March deadline, that in fact, this is going to go to the top of that list of policies that are currently being reviewed by the policy committee. So I just want to be clear that there are some policies that we need to, that we're currently looking at, and I don't have a number in front of me, there's probably what? How many dollars do we have in the pile? About six. So we're saying by March, which is essentially next month, that we're going to have to push back a couple of those policies to make sure that we can meet this deadline for the, this vote.
Madam President?
Ms. Van Twyver?
This is just a short thing, it shouldn't take much time to develop that and get it in front of the board, or at least the curriculum committee, other, policy committee, so.
Mr. Kaufman?
I have something to say.
Just, I'll, I'll get to you, Mr. Mosher, after Mr. Kaufman, I'm sorry, thank you.
I, I did want to clarify, Dr., to Dr. Mosley's comment about shifting policies for discussion, I have no objection, that was my intent, was to, I mean, I'm sensitive to your comment in terms of not wanting to delay this, and that's why I made the motion the way I did.
Thank you. Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I, I am, I agree that we could put this into, into a policy, but not let it to the, to the time, because some of the policies that we may be looking at are required by law, and we have to do those first. So I think we should review the list of policies and see which ones are mandated by law first, and then, then put the, the protocols into study to form a, the, the proper procedure for it.
Okay. Anybody want to respond to that? I, I don't know what policies are on the docket for the policy committee, but I think that's a valid point, that if there's something that legally has to be, be done, that has legal ramifications, I think that should take precedent, precedent in my mind. But I, I do agree with Ms. Van Twyver, I think this should be a very short, five, five-minute to 10-minute policy at the most, which would probably be a record. Ms. Fitzpatrick?
I just want to ask, since you said that, because often things don't go as smoothly as we hope, do we have permission to continue with the education piece of this, with the staff and the administrators?
I certainly would hope that you would continue with that. I think that it's, it's important for everybody to understand this, it's, I, I think that parent coming to speak did us, did many students a great service, so. Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Do we need a motion to that effect? Perhaps we could amend it? No, amend it to say that they can continue the education piece while awaiting that?
That, that's a good idea.
Okay, and I'd like to amend the motion. I believe the motion is to put the return to learn protocol into policy, and I'd like to amend it to say, in the meantime, that administration can continue to educate staff about this protocol.
A second.
Okay. When?
As an aside.
Finished writing it, I'll have them read it, and then we can have discussion. Okay.
As an aside, but would it be?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mosher?
Would it be necessary to bring in, to get some public opinion on this, parents and things?
I, I don't think at this point that would be necessary. Okay, Mr.?
Oh, something we should keep in mind, anyway.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guarino, could you read the amendment?
The, the amendment, well, the motion, I believe, is to send the return to learn procedures to policy committee to review and return to the Board of Education by the end of March. And in the meantime, administration can continue to educate the staff on protocol, on the concussion protocol.
Okay. Could we have a vote on the amendment?
Vote on the amendment. Mr. Mosher?
So, I'm going to say no, because I think we need a little more time than the end of March.
Okay. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes, so the motion, the, 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 the motion is amended?
Okay, and could you, could you read the motion again with the amendment, just so it's clear for everybody?
Okay. The motion with the amendment is to send the return to learn procedures to the policy committee for review, and return to the Board of Education to, by the end of March. And in the, in the meantime, administration can continue to, continue to educate staff on the concussion protocol.
Okay. Any, any discussion? Okay. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mosher, on the motion, yes or no?
I'll say yes, but I, I think that we need more time.
Okay. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes, the motion carries eight to zero.
It was, it was, I want to thank you so much and your team for putting this together. It's for the benefit of all our students, and I, I certainly appreciate that, and I think you did a, a great job doing, doing great service to the, our district. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Point of order, I would request a move to reorder agenda items this evening, and move Dr. Mosley's 100-day reflection into the superintendent's comment. It's my understanding that new business is reserved for items brought forth by the board or by, by the board, not administration. And the way our agendas are structured, the administration, through Dr. Mosley, has dedicated time to address his issues to the board, and I ask that this be moved to that particular place on our agenda.
Would you have a, a problem with that, Dr. Mosley? Would you prefer it be in new business?
I'm ready to go. Whatever, whatever you'd like, I'm chilled, do whatever you'd like, I'm prepared to put out the 100 days, or I can certainly give my, my superintendent's report, or just kind of make a modification to the report and talk, jump right into the 100 days, whatever you'd like.
Okay. Is there any? Well, I was going to ask, is there consensus on this? Do we have to vote? Is there consensus that we can move this, Dr. Mosley's 100-day, what is it? The 100-day reflection to the superintendent's comments? Okay, we don't need a vote, we have consensus.
Ms. Oden, another point of order, this new business item speaking to the motion time limit, it does not indicate what board member put it on the calendar, I ask that I move that this be sent to the policy committee?
Yeah.
Per the?
Uh huh. It should go to policy.
Procedure, policy, as you discussed earlier.
And I was, I'm the person that asked for that, and it does go to policy.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
We didn't do public comments.
No, we did not.
Dr. Mosley, before you start, we had the public question and comment period limited to 15 minutes, if anybody signed up. Mr. Donovan, can you see if anybody signed up for a public comment?
No.
No? Okay. I'm sorry, Dr. Mosley, you're here on, thank you.
Couple of things. First of all, I think it's important, as starting out as superintendent, you need to have a sense of, of an entry plan, or a sense of where you'd like to see the district go, and also understand what's going on in the district. So part, this is, this conversation slash presentation is long overdue, it's long overdue to the, to the community, but it's also long overdue to the, the, the school board. And that's not anyone's fault, partly because of what recently happened with the elections. And so when you have a new school board coming on, you want to make sure that they get a sense of where the administration's coming from, but also the administration wants to get a sense of where the school board is coming from as well. So partly, when I, when I first interviewed for the job, I said that I would, you know, after, I, you know, in the political arena, it's like the president's first 100 days of office or something like that. So I thought it would be appropriate, I don't think of myself as like the president or anything like that, I think of myself as just the superintendent. And technically, if people are watching, there's someone out there, there's some mathematician or someone's actually counting the calendar, so I recognize that it's actually day 99 today, tomorrow is day 100. So I guess we can call it that. But partly what I wanted to kind of share with the board and to the general public, that, kind of like what I've been doing as superintendent since starting, how did I arrive at some of these goals, and what are some of the challenges that I see in terms of the district, but also the strengths that are coming out of the district as well. So I started off with kind of a, you know, I would say the ingredients of communication, community connection, collaboration, and my favorite word is innovation. So under that, under the umbrella of these, I would say, these definitions of how I see the district, I developed a, what I would call my entry plan, but also some goals that I would like to focus on in conjunction with the board and with the community. Okay, so can we go down a little bit? So that's kind of, that's all on the website, that's just kind of introduction to who I am and what have you. Just keep going down. Just can you actually keep going down a little bit? Down, 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 down? Right there, right there, the phases, that's fine. Nope, just, you can go to the next slide. All right. So part of what I wanted to do is kind of, what I wanted to avoid is to be very, what I want to avoid is, I didn't want a plan where it reads like War and Peace. I want it to be very, very simple, very, very fluid, but also kind of what I say, capture the essence of what I see as phase one, phase two, and phase three. So first- So, first thing that I thought was important is, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through the presentation about communication with stakeholders. What are people need, what, what are people seeing in the district? What are, what are the district needs? When I first started, I certainly talked about forming a strategic action plan for the district. I think that's very important, and I'm still committed to doing that. So, again, first phase, phase one is to really start to have those conversations about strategic planning. Who should be involved? What do we feel and look like? What is the vision of the school? And certainly, I've been able to gain a sense of what, where people are coming from, and what they would need, and what they want, and what they see in the district through these conversations at forums that I've, that I've held and facilitated during the first Hundred Days. Provide faculty and administrative stability. I think by far, that has been a theme that I have seen throughout this entire Hundred Days, is certainly the faculty really wanting that stability, and really wanting to understand what that feels and looks like. Stability doesn't mean you see the, the same people every day. Stability actually starts here. I was mentioning during one of a board meeting that stability, sometimes when we go through the budget, I feel like people are watching our board meetings, not because, you know, they're interested in per se, but they're like, they're watching our budgets because they feel like it's the Hunger Games. It's like, is my job going to be cut next? Is it me? Is it me? Do I have to come down and call Adam? Do I, do I have to come down and grab my people to come down here? So, stability doesn't necessarily mean about seeing the same thing. Stability means, what is going to happen next? Am I safe? Finally, I looked at the phase one, is that there's already, there are already things in this, in my mind, going on to the district that can't be stopped, and need to be, need to continue to grow, but also need some nurturing as well. And so, that's why you see the full day kindergarten, continue to implement that. Phase two, I'd say prioritize initiatives. First of all, I think it's important to develop a timeline for strategic planning. By developing a timeline for strategic planning, you set expectations for yourself, you set expectations for the group, but more importantly, you really have a start date for it. Originally coming in, I believed that I could get the plan started sometime in October. We had some challenges in terms of the contract, challenges in terms of getting some, some clarity on committee work, but now that's all past us. So, with the help of the NTU and other stakeholders and the board, I really believe that we can certainly move forward and be able to get that strategic plan up and running. I'm going to use a word that Dan does not like, but I'll say ish, by August of this year. That would be a tentative timeline, but I certainly would like to do that. Implement preliminary goal development. The one thing that I think is important, as we start to talk about planning, is that for our plan, for our strategic plan, and I've said it 100 times, we don't want to have 17 or 18 goals. It'll certainly read like War and Peace for our strategic plan. In my mind, there would be no less than about five goals for the plan. Two of them are already occupied, and those are board governance and full day kindergarten, and then through collaboration, through discussion and facilitation, I believe that we can certainly identify three other more, three other goals to go with our strategic plan. Something that's going to come up again tonight, I would encourage the board to explore board governance, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. Develop a budget that reflects initiatives. This, at this time next year, it is my hope that there are no surprises. We already know exactly where the majority or the little amount of money we get, where that money's going to go to, because all the money that, or the money that we're thinking about allocating for programs will definitely be outlined in our plan. So, our priorities in terms of funding projects, programs, or even infrastructure will clearly be defined in our strategic plan. And finally, I think phase three, it's just really about monitoring our progress. What I could say, checking off the boxes. You don't want to have one goal that you're focused on for the next 20 years. If that's, that's it, then you're not, never going to be successful. So, I'd say setting reasonable expectation in terms of completion of our goals according to our strategic plan and in my entry plan is appropriate for phase three. That's the evaluation piece. So, one of the things for my goals is that during the 2017, 2018 school year, the superintendent shall work in collaboration with the National School Board to implement governance processes and procedures. The National School District would benefit significantly from governance structure that will lead to a clear expectation of board's responsibility. This structure will guide communication, work for strategic planning and district operation. As a result, our stakeholders will observe effective decision-making that will in turn restore trust in board leadership and add value in the public education. Time and time, and this, this is something where, as the administrative team looks at, we need to know where the governance piece is in the district. We need to know exactly how that governance structure is going to form, operate, and work. It needs, in my mind, to be stable. And stable in a way where we know that if there is, we can generate policies, we can generate policy and work in, whether it's the policy, policy committee, or even in the curriculum evaluation committees, that we can have the time and the effort to kind of know where it's going, how long it's going to take, and get it done. There are policies at the state level, I'm sorry, legislation at the state level, that will definitely have, that will definitely have significant impact on the way we operate our schools. My, the best example that I can give you is the SB 193. We, as this board, need to be talking about this in event that this goes through, and we haven't yet. If we haven't had those conversations yet, then we're very, very susceptible to something happening to our funding source where we might not even have a choice but to make reductions because we're unclear about where this is going. We have an opportunity to really go up at the state level and say, listen, the National School Board supports or doesn't support, and here are the reasons why. And we haven't had that conversation. It's no one's fault. I'm not here to throw grenades at anyone, but what I'm saying to you is that if you're not doing well on this and you're not talking about it, it's going to be very difficult for us and the, and our teachers to give you a budget that's going to be sustainable. There are so many policies and, and resources out there that are available through our New Hampshire School Board Association that could benefit this district, that could benefit us in terms of procedural pieces, that I think would be beneficial. I think it will be helpful for us, too, when we talk about board governance. It really will help us to delineate the roles of the administration and the board. But I think having these conversations, and it certainly continue to define what these conversations feel and look like, will help all of us. It'll help us prioritize our workload. It'll help us prioritize, I use the word workflow. What I mean by workflow, the last policy that was presented, I don't, we wholeheartedly agree that it should be no more than a five-minute conversation, but it doesn't turn out to be that way. It doesn't. It may sound simplistic, but it's not. And so, we spend an exorbitant amount of time trying to wordsmith probably four or five sentences that could be easily generated with some contacts that have expertise in, I'm using policy as an example, that could take us two minutes. I can't share with you how much time Rosie and Tara spent today making copies. They made so many copies that our copier is down. We have, we have two copiers in our, in our central office, but now we only have one because that's how many copies we're making for all of these meetings. Now, I'm not saying it's not necessary, but understand that there's a lot of copying that happens between this meeting and the meeting we're going to have on Wednesday, and the next meeting we're going to have on Wednesday, and the next meeting we're going to have on Wednesday. So, my question is, it's not a, it's a, it's kind of a rhetorical question, but what are other school districts doing in terms of work, work, workflow, excuse me? And how do we, as a district, really work to the point where we can walk away out of meetings and not feel like exhausted, but we can get back at this at 7:30 in the morning? Because that's the time we have to be there to open up our schools. Our high schools are open up at actually seven, but we're there at 7:30 in the morning to really get the school, the schools up and running. So, those are the things that I'd like to, what I, what I would like to say is kind of meld together with the board around those governance pieces so that we're clear about how we can move forward. Go ahead. So, over the last years, the National has experienced many, over the last three years, I say three years, the National School Board has experienced many leadership and program transitions. During the 2017, 2018 school year, the superintendent and his leadership team will develop mechanisms to evaluate curriculum programs and instructional assessments district-wide through the strategic planning process. As a result, programming priorities will be aligned to a funding cycle. Over my Hundred Days since I've been here, it has been clear to me and my administrative team, there have been so many different programs that have been started. And what I mean by started, it means that, that we could get better at, what I say, simplifying and providing a clear direction of expectations, and we've started that. I think one example would be Eureka Math. I think that's a great example of how we started something. But there's a lot of work that needs to be done around that. It's new. It needs professional development. It needs to move forward in terms of how do we evaluate the effectiveness, the effectiveness of that? So, over the course of three years, there's been so many different, quote, "new programs", new developments, new curriculum, that it's time for us to just take a step back, saying, what are we all doing district-wide? Every single elementary school should be reading, should be using the same reading program, should be using the same types of assessments, should be going through the same types of assessments in terms of assessing kids. And I know we've gotten into a debate around iReady, and to some degree, I'd like to use that as an example. I want to use that as example because let's just say for discussion, we have iReady. That's fine, but I can share this with you, that in all of our elementary schools, we assess and we, we administer iReady at different times of the year, and so we have different results coming in. If I could use a, well, I'll just say that I can, I think that we could do a better job with coordinating and really coming to a consensus around using common assessments at a common time. The other piece, that it's a hot topic, I really don't want to get into it right now, but we really have to have a discussion about competency-based grading. What does that feel and look like district-wide? Are we going to make, are we going to continue with it? Are we going to move forward with it? I think there is a lot of angst around that. I think people want to know exactly, if we're going to expand it, is it going to go down to the middle school? What does that feel like? Do we need more professional development? So, these are some very difficult questions that we need to address as we start to move down the road of really forming a strategic plan, and as I work through my own goals with the board in the school district. Finally, I think it's important, and something that I advocated for when I, was a candidate for this position, is that I believe that the district needs to come up with a way, and I do have a, I would say, a curriculum, a curriculum review cycle. And what that is, is that every single curriculum program in our district should be on some cycle, whether it's a five-year or a seven-year cycle, where at day, at year five, they go through a review. And that review is to decide whether that curriculum or program is appropriate and aligned to the state standards or the tests that we're using to evaluate students. If not, then we need to have that dialogue. And the other thing is that by having the cycle, every single program, every single teacher, every single principal, I say program, but program in the sense of the program, assistant superintendent, superintendent, and even board members should have a clear understanding when and how much each program is going to cost, and the long-term commitment that these programs are going to have on the district. And I think that, and I know that's missing. So, part of my plan in the next four years is to really start to align, align and really get all of our programs we have into a, what I call, a curriculum cycle. And so, if I could use the example, if we started Eureka Math last year, five years from now, we should start the curriculum review on our elementary Eureka program to determine whether that program is still effective, or it needs to be tweaked in some way, or we need to provide our, our teachers with professional development, or perhaps maybe this program isn't appropriate for us. So, those are the types of things that we need to think about. The other thing I think about is how are we going to use data in our district? What does it feel and look like? Are we talking about growth? Are we talking about all kids reading on grade level? Because there is a discrepancy on what we value, or what the teachers value, or what that feels and looks like. And I think when we'll get into this, probably in the budget cycle, when we talk about what is the program to kind of what I call move the needle for all of our kids, whether they're ELL, special education, or the kids who are high achieving. They all have a needle, and certainly it's incumbent on us to find that, I'd say, fuel to move that needle. Go ahead, Garth. Is this goal number three? Okay. Goal number three is something that I've, actually, I've enjoyed. Develop opportunities to promote community involvement and outreach for citizens to share and voice their concerns, ask questions about the district, and learn about the learning culture of the district. By far, I think I have certainly made myself available and, and certainly have gone the extra mile to be out in the community. I think one, you know, venue that I would say has really had a, an, an opportunity for me to have dialogue is by Mosley's Muffins. And certainly, I've, I'll give you some credit there, Mr. Kaufman, that was your. Okay. How about calling Eminem? And by far, that has been a nice opportunity for me to really get out and, and, and talk to people. I've held them every month since I've started. I, I have held them, what I call, and I've held them, I strategically facilitated the forums so that I was at different schools at different times. So, for instance, so one month I had a Mosley's Muffin at the south, that next month I had one at the north. I went to Penachuk. I started off at Penachuk, and then I went to the Elm Street, and I actually, about last week, I was at Fairgrounds Middle School. So, one of the things I said when I started, I said, I'm going to be in and visit every single school in the district. And so, Rosie, my administrative assistant, she challenged me and said, you're going to be pretty busy. So, I've made a conscious effort to say that, and I can say this tonight, that I have been in every single school in the district, visiting, talking with parents, talking and meeting with teachers, principals, and that has by far been something that I have enjoyed. I've enjoyed it because they've given me perspective, they've grounded me, they've shared the challenges, and also the great things that have happened here in the district. And certainly, having that communication gives me a feel on where the district should be, what's important, and also some of the uniqueness of our schools, and certainly how our, our faculty does great work. There are so many different things going on in our schools that I can probably sit here and, and share with you that, just the great things as a, as a superintendent, as a father, as a parent of the schools, it, I hear it from many different, I call you, this is my first board, I have my own board at home with my own kids, and certainly, they have, and I mean this wholeheartedly, love the experience that the National Public Schools has offered them. I've also made it a point to get out there in the community, to attend community events with, with, connected to the schools, and certainly with the community center open up right next to Dr. Crisp. That's been a great partnership there. We have, I've, actually, last week, I was at the Chamber of Commerce. I met with them and talked to the future leaders at that event as well. I've also have, gave a speech and talked with the Rotary Club here in the National Schools. So, it's, it's been a whirlwind, and I appreciated everyone's candor as well. You know, certainly, when you're in these forums, people can come up to you and ask you many things, but also, it's always been a sense of respect and admiration, so I thank you. At my muffins with Mosley, anyone can ask me any question that they want. There's no, there's no censor, there's, there's no guidelines or anything like that, and I've appreciated teachers and parents and PTO members giving me feedback on where they'd like to see the district, and how I can be helpful in facilitating that. This is something I'm not going to do just this one year. I will continue to do that for the rest of the year and into the next year. In addition to all of that, I meet with the, the NTU president once a week to go over concerns, issues, or anything like that, so that's been great. I've also had some, I don't think we've met in quite some time, but we started, didn't we have some discussion with, is it munchies? Munchies with Mosies? I'm talking about the Custodians. So, I've had some munchies with Mosley's, and we've shared some Doritos. So, I've had some munchies with Mosley's, and we've shared some Doritos as we've talked about some issues. Doritos are my vice. I like Doritos and Snickers. And so, they certainly, it was a very difficult meeting to get through, but again, here's what we're doing. We're talking, we're meeting, we should probably get together at some point. But we've certainly been able to certainly have those conversations. I'd like to say too, you know, not to put her on the spot, but I've been pretty responsive to your request. Hannah, is that fair enough? Okay. So, even if you look at the media, I've been receptive, and certainly, anything that I can share with local media that doesn't violate confidentiality, I've been more than willing to get back to our local media to, again, facilitate that communication. I want this district to be on the, to be, I'm sorry, this district in my mind is number one. And whether it's getting out there, meeting with the custodians, talking to the NTU rep, talking to our local media source, I'm willing to do that to make sure that there's a sense of transparency for our district. Go right ahead. Yep. And this last one, I was tinkering with. I just felt incumbent to mention, as one of my goals, is to make sure that we understand that there are seven bargaining units in the district. That's incumbent on me to make sure that those discussions and these units' contracts take a priority. It does have significant budget implications, budget implication, and certainly, that we want to make sure as the district team, that these contracts are starting to be addressed in some way or another. So, I felt incumbent on myself to just put that out there as goal number four and to share that with the board. I will say that I'd like to consider this document to be organic in a way that it's, if depending on where the strategic action plan for the district is formed, these goals will change or modify, because I really want to make sure that my goals are aligned to the strategic action plan, which I would envision the plan being aligned to the board's goals and desires as well. Thank you.
I just want to ask Dr. Mosley, did you have anything else that would have come under superintendent's comments than this? Can we just finish up that, and we'll come back?
Just real quick, I I had it queued up in my queue here, superintendent's stuff, so I apologize here. Yeah, I do.
I'll come back to that.
I have it right here. Okay. I just want to acknowledge that Jeff Leoni, our video production teacher in our CTE program, was recognized for excellence in Action Award in Arts and AV Technology and Communication. So, he was recognized, and on April 5th, he is traveling to Washington DC, fully paid for, to receive an award for his work in the CTE program for video production. So, I wanted to just thank him and publicly acknowledge him for that. Ms. Timmons and I met with our educational council this past week, was it this past week?
Yes.
And so, it's been a while since we've met, but we talked, I won't get into too many details, because I could be here for quite some time. We talked a little bit about substitute teachers, we talked about special education services, student assignments at the high school. And part of what one of the teachers mentioned with me, which ties in nicely to this presentation, he said, "Well, what do you want? Like, where is the district going to be? Like, what are your goals?" So, I said, "Well, stay tuned for the next board meeting." But I think it's important that, it was a very fair question, that he certainly wanted to know the direction of where the district was going. And as I shared with you today, I would want this district to come to a way where we can have some predictability, can have some stability, and certainly, I'm hoping that we can, you know, kind of move down the road of peace. The other thing that came up during the meeting, and I'm smiling, I can't get rid of this, this has become a little bit of the bane of my existence, but snow days, and how do I call them? And so, with that said, the feedback I got was that I called too early. So, people were requesting that I call at 5:00 AM as opposed to 4:00, whatever time I call. And just so the public is aware, that we do have swimmers in the district, swimmers that get up early, swimmers that have to be at the pool, they leave around, I think, 4:30 or around the 4-ish time, so they're getting ready. So, as soon as they know that there's no school, or there's been some type of cancellation or delay, the better it is for their families as well, and thus, that's why I call it earlier. I just want to acknowledge Sean Smith, Chris Lassard. Again, they received up to $71,000 in infrastructure grants, which I'd like to say, just kind of thinking about, this was Chris Lassard, and I'm not taking anything away from Sean Smith or even Dan Donovan, but imagine if they had a grant writer with them, and they could certainly go after more money. So, this is just kind of my plug to say, you know, $71,000 is awesome, it's great, but with a grant writer, I think we can put a one in front of that. Finally, I want to apologize to the Mount Pleasant parents, or anyone that was at Steamfest. I was there on Saturday, and I was driving around Mount Pleasant, but I didn't see any cars there, so I thought it might be a larger event. So, I just drove around a couple of times, but I didn't know the event actually was still taking place. So, I know, Madam Chair, you were there, Mr. Guarino, you were there. So, I was there around 12, 1 o'clock. Just, I really wanted to get to that, so please invite me the next time. That's basically it.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we have the board response to superintendent's comments. And I know, Dr. Mosley, we moved something into his comments that had been under new business, so I would hope if there are any comments to that, that we keep them fairly brief. It's 20 after 8:00, and hopefully, we have the snow day coming up, and the snow day esism under new business. So, you know, I'm hoping we keep comments brief at this point, so we can get out of here at, hopefully, by 9:00 or a little after, because we do have a non-public on the Brentwood situation. Ms. Van Twyver.
Thank you. Dr. Mosley, oops. Dr. Mosley, the goals that you've specified in your 100-day reflection, those goals you have set for school year 17, 18, and 18, 19?
No, that's actually a very good point. I said 17, 18. So, it's seven.
So, where's 17?
It says during the 17, 18 school year. So, it's just these, they're one-year goals.
One-year goals. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman.
Dr. Mosley, I'm happy to hear about, finally, for me, discussion about the strategic plan, and I actually had put something on the agenda tonight, because I didn't want us to lose sight of something we agreed was a very important thing to address. But I'm very, I'm kind of confused a little bit, because the strategic, what I feel is happening right now, by virtue of this presentation, and even with the budget, is that the budget is driving the strategic plan, when in fact, it absolutely should be the opposite, that we, as a board, as a community, determine what the goals are, what the needs are, what the strategic initiatives are, and that is how the budget should be derived. In other words, we know where we want to go, now we put money behind it to ensure that it can happen. So, I'm concerned that we're making, the strategies being implemented before there's ever a discussion via the budget process. That's the first thing. The second thing, and if I understood you correctly, you wanted to start that process by August? Or did you hope to have a draft or something by August?
So, a couple of things. I just want to kind of back up a little bit. Part of what I have said is around stability, and that stability starts with safety for our staff, safety for our community. And so, to kind of react to what you've just shared, I would say that one of the steps for the strategic plan, there is no strategic plan right now. It's in development. I think the best way for the budget process to happen is to just kind of, and this is maybe a different conversation we can have, I'll just add that it would bring a sense of stability. And I think part of that means that people just want to know where they stand in terms of having a job next year or not. And I think that that's a discussion we can have a little later. My hope, and given everything that we start to talk with the key stakeholders, and that's with the NTU, with our students, with our key administrative team, that by sometime in August, we would have a draft of the strategic plan. Now, part of that plan, as I've said this before I started, and I'll say it now, that plan has already been written for us in some way. And I'll give you an example that ties right into the budget. This administrative team has made a request for an additional Paris for our full-day kindergarten. That's part of the strategic plan, and that is tied directly to the budget. The other piece that is up for discussion is around board governance, and that is, in fact, in the budget as well. So, I see it as it's a process. I don't think we're far off in terms of where we'd like to go, and where the other three initiatives in the strategic plan come from, it's totally up to the strategic committee.
Excuse me, Dr. Mosley.
Yes?
It's up to the board to determine what the goals of the district are, and it's up to the administration to implement the goals as set forth by the board. That is our legal responsibility. When you speak to BOE, clear expectation of BOE's responsibility, Dr. Mosley, that's set by law. That's set by all the educational regulations that we have to follow, and there's lots of recommendations that we, as a board, must follow. We're bound by law. We're very clear in what, there's no expectation of response. We know what they are. It's very clear to us, and the policies we have are intended to implement our responsibilities as put forth by the Constitution, by the RSAs, by the various ED regs, et cetera. I really need to ensure that the administration understands that the administration is governed by the board, that the board is not governed by the administration. And quite frankly, I'm a bit insulted. It seems to me rather presumptive that you're coming here, this is the first conversation since you joined us, and other than the interview process, this is the first public conversation.
Excuse me, Mr. Kaufman, could you not be so accusatory and just speak a little bit more respectfully to the superintendent, please?
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Softly, but please, you know, okay. So, forgive me, that's my passion, speaking, and that's my concern, speaking, because I actually care about all the time I put into this. And the board, thank you for interrupting me, Madam Chair, because I lost my train of thought, which is what people do when they don't want you to make a comment. They interrupt you to stop your train of thought, just to achieve what just happened here. The board.
Excuse me. I did not do that for that purpose.
Well, it certainly had that effect, Madam Chair, and I resent the continued.
If you're not going to stay.
I resent it. I absolutely resent this.
If you're not going to stay on topic.
Dr. Mosley has overstepped his bounds by presumptively determining
Out of order.
Two goals for this board, which we haven't even met yet, to discuss. And I find that very objectionable. And I'm sorry, Dr. Mosley, I have been a big fan of yours. I really have, and you know that. But this is really over the line in presumptively suggesting that two of the five goals, that you have arbitrarily said there would be five, for you to say that two of them have already been taken, and that the committee, the strategic committee, is going to determine the other three. I'm sorry. The board drives this process. The board will decide who those committee members are.
Excuse me. The president has a control of the, the president has control of
Don't you dare shout at me.
The president has control of this meeting. Could you please listen to the president?
Sir, you are out of order, out of order, and we will take a five-minute recess. 35, and I would like to call the meeting back to order. Ms. Raymond? No, Ms. Timmons, you had your hand up?
I didn't get a chance to speak.
No, but Ms. Timmons had her hand up before you.
That's all right.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olden. Yes, I had my hand up for about a half an hour. I don't like to talk for the sake of just talking, but I'd like to say this to you, Dr. Mosley. You have been doing a wonderful job in this last 99 days slash one day tomorrow, 100. I've been here 28 years in Nashua, and the 28 years in Nashua, I did not know the superintendent of schools. Not only that, I was involved with the schools, but did not know the superintendent of schools. I'm very involved in Nashua community, and I mean very involved. You are known everywhere, every single place that I've gone, and I'm not just on the school board, I'm on many, many committees and many, many boards that know who you are. So, I'd like to thank you for that. Secondly, the things that you said make sense, make common sense, and we are going to support you 100%. That's why the school board hired you in the first place. You didn't get hired because you didn't know anything. You got hired for your intelligence, and we have to respect that, if nothing else. So, I just want to say that. I don't want to occupy a lot of time. I don't want to speak for the sake of just speaking, and I don't want to disrespect anyone, but thank you very much. You have done a great job, and my children know you, my grandchildren know you, my great-grandchildren know you, everybody know you. In any job that I'm in, they know who you are. So, you are doing something good. You are saving this school.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Ohensie.
Thank you. I have two quick points. As to competency-based grading, you mentioned that. The board asked for a review and a presentation from the administration on how competency-based grading has improved learning before any decision would be made to expand the grading. I looked up the motion, but I couldn't find it, because there's no internet connection in here. But it was, it's in there on the motions page, you can search for it. And then, the other thing is, Nashua is a very different district from others. We are unique. We can't just follow the lead of other districts. And I appreciate your concern, but this constant drumbeat to clarify the governance, the role of the board, isn't, I don't think it's appropriate. The superintendent takes direction from the board, not the other way around. Thank you.
Mr. Guarino.
I want to thank Dr. Mosley for a job well done, for setting goals and trying to meet those goals. And I've looked at the procedures and the rules that govern our Board of Education. We delegate, we delegate to the superintendent, okay? That's what the Board of Education does, okay? And I think Dr. Mosley has done an excellent job. And goals are, goals are sort of general, you know, you have to have a vision, and I think Dr. Mosley has a vision for the district, and that's how you get goals. Goals are general expressions, and then, down the line, you have objectives, you have measures of effectiveness. And I think what Dr. Mosley has done, he's done a very good job. And I also wanted to talk about the STEM at Mount Pleasant, and I want to commend Patricia Snow, the principal there, and her faculty, and also, thanks to the UNH students, because there were lots of students enthusiastic about science, technology, engineering, and math. That's what I saw on Saturday, and that's the kind of thing that we need in this district. Get them while they're young, in fourth and fifth grade, girls as well as boys, and if you saw those kids, you could hear a pin drop in some of those rooms. They were so engrossed in what they were, in what they were looking at. So, once again, I want to thank you very much.
Mr. Mosher, do you have anything that you would like to say at this point?
Yeah, I, I am in full sympathy with the STEM approach, and we know that, how are we going to know how the world works if we can't read, write, or understand the basics? If we can't read, write, or understand the basic physics of the planet, how it turns, and proceeds from one day to the next? So, it's very, very important to have that math, and the reading, writing, and the science. Very, very important.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Raymond, you haven't spoken. Would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mrs. Oden. I'd just like to, I'd just like to say that I appreciate this update, the 100-day. I appreciate that you have laid out some clear goals, and you're clearly working towards them. I've been to a muffins with Mosley. I was really impressed with the number of parents who came out and had things to say and were engaged and felt heard at those meetings. And so, I appreciate that. I would like to say a couple of things about governance. I think having a goal of shared expectations between admin and the board is important. I think we seem to have some conflict right now between how the board feels that the relationship should be, and how admin feels that the relationship should be. And I do think that we need to come to some sort of resolution in order to work together effectively. You know, I think as a board, we sometimes take on some management and administration tasks which can impact our efficiency. But I also think that it is our role to oversee the district. And so, things like strategic planning, I agree, frankly, with the goals that you have presented. But I also think that there needs to be board oversight and board voice in this process going forward. So, if we are having strategic planning meetings, and there's a strategic planning process that is happening, it's very important to me that we make sure that the board is a very big part of that. And so, that's really all I have to say about that at this time. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. I'm sorry. Ms. Timmons?
Thank you.
I'd like to comment on what Ms. Raymond just said. One of the things we oversee, we don't control, we don't dictate. We oversee. And that's what I want to do. I want to be able to oversee what the administration is doing, not dictate to them. And that's the difference between governance and dictation. So, I like to see that we move forward on these goals and outline, and go through the outline that Dr. Mosley set up for this board, and we can work in conjunction with him and not against him.
Ms. Van Twyver, did you have your hand up?
Well, since you're allowing second-choice chances on this, I'd like to say that it is the board's responsibility to develop a strategic plan in conjunction with the superintendent and the administration. It is our responsibility, and it is a committee of the whole that does it. The last one that I attended, that had participated in, it was a committee of the whole. So, I think that Mr. Kaufman was correct. I didn't like the manner in which he presented his views and what transpired afterwards. But it is this board's responsibility to develop the strategic plan, and it should be from the board to the administration. Thank you.
Okay. And we'll now move on to student member comments. Ms. Sweeney, do you have any comments?
Well, I would like to start by saying, Dr. Mosley, we are all very happy with how you're moving this district forward. I am part of many groups, along with parents, just regular in the community. And this is like the first time in a very long time that I've seen people actually be interested in what is happening in our schools, and whether that be because of muffins with Mosley, which I find very entertaining. But, and you give us hope, and you by setting goals and by setting standards for where you want us to be. And I think we all love that. And secondly, I know you brought up the STEM fair that was at Mount Pleasant. And I'm actually part of a group of high school students that goes to Mount Pleasant for STEM every Wednesday. And I can definitely say that since I have been in elementary school, which was years ago, the STEM interest has definitely increased exponentially over the past few years. And it just keeps getting better and better every week. And then the kids are so interested, and I'd love to see that keep going. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Gillis.
Yeah, I'd just like to talk about the goal number three that Dr. Mosley presented, because I could tell how excited he was to present that one and like talk about how he's already started to really initiate that goal, kind of. And so, I really, you talked about like the muffins with Mosley and how much of a good impact that's had on like parents in the district, at different schools. But you forgot to talk about how your Twitter is really broadening access to a lot of like students that can be involved with the community. And I've just heard like around school that like the students really appreciate that Twitter, and that I think it's a great, a great thing you did by making a Nashua schools Twitter.
Thank you. I really appreciate tweeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just add one qualifying? Just to be very clear, the presentation of those goals were not to impose on the will of the board. It's to work in collaboration with the board. And that's a big difference. And no means that with those goals about governance, we need governance in a way that helps us understand where the district wants to go. We'll go anywhere you want. But if we don't know where we're going, or where the next, you know, cut is going, it's very difficult to manage and move a district forward. So, I just want to just kind of clarify that piece. And certainly, the strategic plan isn't, it's something where I believe it's a collaborative piece where it involves everyone, not just the administrators, parents, community members, school board members. And certainly, it's long overdue, and we're certainly looking forward to that collaboration. Thank you.
I would just like to add that, Dr. Mosley, I see you as the educational leader of this district. And I think working in collaboration and listening to you will grow our district and continue to move us forward. So, I want to thank you. I thought it was a good report. Committee on Policy, oh, I'm sorry, Committee on Budget.
I have a committee report. Just if you bear with me here, I'll cover our last two meetings. The Budget Committee has met twice. At our first meeting, Dr. Mosley and Mr. Donovan presented what we are calling the superintendent's budget. This budget, as presented, represents a spending increase of 3.41% over the current operating budget. In terms of dollars, the new budget would spend $110,329,993 compared to the current budget amount of $106,687,405. This represents a significant increase over the mayor's suggested 2.1 increase. The 2.1 increase is just over the 1.9 calculated spending cap that was just revised upward from 1.3. So, we went from 1.3 to 2.1. We now know the, well, that's what we had originally been told. At our most recent meeting, we had presentations on the English Language Learners Program and Special Education. The ELL program has requested four additional teachers, and the special ed program has requested an additional psychologist. Our next meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday at 6:30 here in the North Boardroom. Scheduled topics include non-instructional costs such as transportation, plant operations, curriculum, well, non-instructional costs such as transportation and plant operations. That's one topic. And then curriculum, CTE, and remedial instruction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Okay. Committee on Finance and Operations.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Finance and Operations had not met since last time.
Okay.
So, we don't really have a report. But we will have a report next meeting.
And your next meeting is?
Tomorrow, I believe, tomorrow night.
February 13, 6:30 at Central Office. Okay. Thank you. Committee on Policy. Oh. Policy. Mr. Mosher. Madam Chair. The next meeting is February 20 at 6 o'clock at Central Office. Madam Chair? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. At our last policy meeting, Mr. Kaufman chaired. But there's one policy here that there was one line that needed to be changed, and that is, the change has been made. But there's also recommendation to rescind two policies that are now covered through the new policy. And so, this was only the matter of changing one line. So, this is the second time it's come before the full board.
Okay. And that's policy, is that policy JRA?
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Madam President, I move the adoption...
Twyver.
Yeah, I move the adoption of policy JRA as amended.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Okay.
Roll call.
And the motion is to adopt policy. If you'd like to write it down, if you'd just read it for me.
The motion is to adopt a recommendation to approve policy JRA, access to student records.
Okay.
Roll call, Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. The motion carries eight yes, no, none against.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move to rescind policy 3440 and 34401.1.
Second. Is there any discussion? None? Ms. Hohensy seconded. Okay. And I believe the motion is to rescind policy 3440 and 3440.1.
Mr. Mosher? Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. The motion carries eight to zero.
And then, next? That's the end of the report from the Policy Committee. The Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation.
Madam President, the Curriculum and Evaluation Committee has not met since the last time we had a board meeting. I don't know the subject of, I will be meeting with Dr. McKinney tomorrow at 1:30 to discuss what that is. But our next meeting will be Monday night.
Okay. And what's the time of that? Is it?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Yes, a new time.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much. Committee on Human Resources.
Madam President, the Human Resources Committee met on February 8. We went over resumes and applications. And then we're going to meet again on February 22 at 5:30.
And that's at Central Office?
Central Office, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay. Mr. Guarino.
We rescinded policy 3440, cumulative records. Is that correct? There's 3440.1?
It was in the same motion.
It was for both of them?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I didn't hear.
Mr. Kaufman?
I have a question to the committee chair or through you. Can we get a status update on what interviews are currently in progress? I don't want to know candidates, I'm just job positions.
Oh, it's the, I'm sorry, I should have told you, it's for the principal for Nashua High North.
Is that the only one?
Yes. No, it's not the only one. It's the only, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, it is.
The only one currently going on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Liaison reports.
Madam Chair, I think I already touched upon that during my superintendent's report.
You did.
Yes.
I would like to say, I did go to, and this was a while back, but our meeting got over at 11:30 one night. I wanted to compliment the ELL teacher, Karen Carringer, from Elm Street, who had a pizza and book night. Every student there got five books. They were able to bring siblings, and the siblings got a book. It was a very well-attended, I bet there were probably over 200 people there, and a lot of families. And the enthusiasm those people had for receiving books was just, it was a pleasure to see that. They were very appreciative. So, I wanted to compliment them. And I did go to the STEM Fest at Mount Pleasant. It was for all of the district. Any fourth or fifth grader was eligible to go at no cost. They were given lunch. They had six different areas. We had, there were 12 students, I believe, from UNH in engineering programs. There was a physics major, math education major, environmental engineering, students from all over. I don't think there was one student from UNH that was from New Hampshire. They were from New Jersey, Connecticut, Massachusetts. But it was a program, and I think Mr. Guarino said that you could have walked into any of those rooms and heard a pin drop. It was just wonderful. And I do think that The Telegraph had an article on what Haley was talking about, that there are students going into our elementary schools, working with kids on STEM things. So, I want to thank the Nashua Telegraph for letting people know what's going on in the schools, because there's just so much going on. But I want to thank UNH, and I want to thank Pat Snow for running that district-wide STEM Fest for fourth and fifth graders. So, just my liaisons. Unfinished business, governance. Anybody have any comments they want to make on board governance? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. This particular item has been on the agenda probably since maybe last summer, September, certainly. And it's a continuing item, and we keep getting the same information sent to us each month. This thing about effective school board meetings, we've seen that before. I believe we've seen this other piece about professional training. So, I would, I'm personally, I don't understand why we're wasting our time on a monthly basis seeing the same information. If there's something new, I understand that. But this is repetitive at this point. So, I just want to point that out. And if there's such a great concern, which I can share, that we don't waste a lot of time at meetings, I don't know why we're seeing the same material more than once repeatedly over several months.
I think probably because it's still unfinished.
Well, we've, there's been, never been a motion to deal with any of it. I'll make a motion. I move to, what is the motion? Postponing indefinitely discussion of governance.
Second. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I have a question. I haven't seen this before. Maybe it was overlooked, but I was very happy that it was in this package. And so, I even said to Ms. Raymond that I really appreciate this document. So, if it was in the packages prior to the day, we came on board in January, I don't recall seeing it. So, I really appreciate this.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Raymond?
I would like to speak to my motion when I can, please.
I'm sorry.
I'll be...
You should be first. No, no. Go right ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. I'm just trying to get the board to do something, okay? That's what this is about. We added the School Board Association. To the budget proposal from Dr. Mosley includes adding the School Board Association to the budget, which is the implementation of this kind of proposal. So, that is already baked into what we will consider in the Budget Committee as we review the budget. So, beyond that, governance, as I alluded to earlier, we have lots of governance. It's all driven by state law. We know what it is. We know what our responsibilities are. So, I would appreciate either a proposal, it's just a dance. And to me, it's a waste of time without any concrete proposal. So, I would ask the administration to come forth with a proposal or just take it off the agenda until you're ready to present something.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, Madam President. Respectfully, I don't think we should postpone it indefinitely. Respectfully, I don't think we should postpone it indefinitely. I would be happy to table this until we have settled our budget, because I do think that the discussion is more appropriate through the budget process, as we talk about whether or not to enroll in the New Hampshire School Board Association, if that is money that we feel would be well-spent. And I think that that is where we should perhaps discuss some of this, you know, should we join an association? I think, you know, I've only been here for six weeks, and I recall the first meeting, having some discussion about should we join an association, should we not, should we figure it out, because we are adults and we know how to do it. I haven't seen a lot of improvement in our board's ability to work efficiently and respectfully with each other. And so, for me, I would like to have that be a goal for us, because I think that everybody here cares very deeply about the district. And even when we disagree, I feel like we all speak nicely to each other outside of the board meetings, because we respect each other. So, I would like to discuss how we can learn to do better, but perhaps not in the main board meeting, perhaps in the budget discussion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. -- Dr. Mosley?
Just a couple of things. I don't -- part of what I -- the New Hampshire School Board Association has invaluable, in my mind, some resources that could be helpful for this school board. Whether you want to take advantage of those resources or not, that's -- I will defer to the board. There is legislation out there that has significant implications for funding sources for the school district, as well as other requirements. And so, part of what I would ask the board to look into, investigate, is just to listen to a representative to come down and talk to you. And then, you can make that determination whether you want to pursue it or not. That's all.
Ms. Hohensie, and then Ms. Van Twyver.
I withdraw my motion and second Ms. Raymond's if Mr. Kaufman would pull his. I know that there is some talk about Senate Bill 193. I know the NTU president wrote to the board. I asked the board president if we could discuss that. She wasn't comfortable with that. We were, once upon a time, members of the School Board Association, and even at that point, this board didn't talk about legislation. So, just getting on -- getting that back, that subscription or that membership back, may or may not change this board's participation in legislative debate. There are links online that you can go to to see the presentation that they gave at Manchester this year, if anybody wants to see what, you know, it's out there in the public domain.
Ms. Van Twyver?
She withdrew. Did you make the motion?
I made the motion.
Are you going to do -- Madam President?
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, I withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you.
And support Ms. Raymond's motion.
That was not a motion?
It was a motion.
I move to withdraw my motion.
Okay. Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes, Madam President. I move that the BOE ask a representative from the New Hampshire School Board Association to come and speak to us about the services and resources available to us from the New Hampshire SBA.
I second that.
Point of order, I thought we already had a tabling and seconded motion from Mrs. Raymond.
No, it was not.
No, there was already a motion on the floor, so she couldn't make a motion.
Right, it was just a point of discussion.
We put our support, we withdrew our motion to support your motion. So, she got in there first.
Is there a second?
I second that.
For Ms. Van Twyver's motion.
I have a question about that.
Discussion. You want to speak to your motion?
Yes, I do. As you might well know, I have been in favor of being a member of the NHSBA ever since I've been on the board. As a policy chair, I have enjoyed the policy part that they offer to us, and I've also attended some of the meetings. I've had training from them on the right-to-know law, and how to be a good member of a board. And it's a very, very worthwhile organization. And I was very upset when we withdrew from that, because for the little money that it costs, it saves a lot of time in developing policies. But also, there's a lot of help that we can derive from them, as far as governing as a board. And our new members, I believe, would benefit from hearing what this board has to say, so they can form their own opinion on whether we should belong to the SBA or not. So, I'm hoping that you'll all vote for this motion, just to have them come down and talk to us, and let them know what they can -- what services they have for us.
Okay.
I have --
Mr. Mosley?
Mr. Mosher.
Mr. Mosher, I'm sorry. Mr. Mosher?
I'm spelling the name wrong, though, that's all. You know, over the past 12 years that I've been involved with the National School Board, that we have had one member who has consistently been attending the meetings and bringing our voice up into caucus through the School Board Association meetings. And unfortunately, she did not get elected this last time around, but I understand she's going to be running again.
Please, keep the political commentary.
This is not a political comment. I did not endorse anybody. But the School Board Association has been very important to us, as Mrs. Van Twyver has said, and that it has helped us with a lot of decisions, and guided us a lot along the way with the policies that were coming up, and the ones that were required by law, which has been a very important part of the Policy Committee. So, I endorse the School Board Association. It's not political, because I am not attached to it in any way. So, I think we should brag in and get somebody down to help the all of the new members that have not been involved with the School Board Association, except by the initial SBA, and see what it is that they really do for us, to help us.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I think if we want to have them come down, we should do so after we complete the budget process, as Mrs. Raymond pointed out. I don't think it's appropriate if we're not sure that we're keeping it in the budget. I'm looking at that money as a half of ELL teacher. Which way do we go? I personally belong to a different School Board Association. I don't want to belong to this one. Do I even have a choice? If the other board members, can we do individual memberships? I don't want to belong to this group, and I don't want to go and make a long statement right now. I just think that if you want to look at what they presented to Manchester, that's out there in the public domain. After our budget process is completed, and we are spending the money, then we could have them come down. But it's premature, in my mind, to do it now.
Ms. Raymond?
I feel the opposite of that. I feel like we should have them make their presentation before we decide on whether to earmark that money. I would like to have the most information possible when making budget decisions. I know I'm not the budget chair, I'm not the president, so I don't know who is in charge of making the schedule for who presents to that. But I would certainly want to hear that before we vote on that line item in the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else? Mr. Kaufman?
So, Madam Chairman, just clarification from Ms. Raymond, if she could address her point. Are you thinking that the presentation from the School Board Association should be part of the budget discussions?
It seems logical, if we're going to discuss a line item in the budget to pay for that, that that would be an appropriate time to discuss what we would get for that money.
If I can just say, as board -- as budget chair, I'd be happy to discuss this on Wednesday. We can look at the calendar at that point, and determine a date, if that's what the -- we're a committee of the whole at that point. So, if that's what the board, the budget committee in, as a whole, determines to do, we could do it then.
I believe the motion is on the floor, too.
Yes, the motion is on the -- can we vote on the motion?
Ms. Timmons?
I would just echo with Ms. Van Twyver, that the motion was on the floor, and we need to vote on that.
Okay. On -- it's up to the president?
No.
Take the roll.
Please repeat the motion.
You need to repeat the motion.
Okay. The motion is to -- that the Board of Education asks a representative of New Hampshire School District Association to come to the Board of Education for a presentation, to present what they have available.
Madam President, I'd like to --
Could -- do you have your copy?
Yeah. You can clarify it, Ms. Van Twyver.
Ms. Van Twyver? I'll read it slowly, okay? I move to have the BOE ask a representative from the New Hampshire School Board Association to come and speak to us about the services and resources available to us from the NHSBA.
Okay. And that was seconded by Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Madam President, may I amend the motion?
On the motion.
May I amend the motion?
I think the motion had been called.
The motion's been called.
No, we didn't call. Okay.
Mr. Mosher?
No.
Wait.
Hold up the question, please.
Mrs. Hohensie is asking to make an amendment on this motion.
Yes, she had already asked to make an amendment to this motion.
I would like to amend that the representative come to a budget meeting to be determined. Budget -- a date to be determined.
Anybody want to make a comment on that?
I'll second that.
Second that. Discussion?
I do not.
Do you want to speak to your motion, Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I think it'd just be the more important time and place, right before we vote on it, to have it in that committee. Our board meetings are busy enough, we don't need to tie them up.
Ms. Raymond?
I agree that that would be the logical choice. However, without knowing their availability, I would not like to straitjacket ourselves, so that that's the option that we have, in case they're not available during, you know, Wednesday nights or whatever. I'd like to have the -- a little bit of flexibility, especially if we're asking them to come during the budget discussion time. Since the budget committee is us, and we're also us, I don't see that anybody would be left out either way.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any comments you want to make?
I would like to have them come as soon as possible. And if it means to have them come in and sit in at a budget meeting, there'll be it.
Madam Chair. Mr. Kaufman?
If I recall correctly, we have presentation commitments through February 28. So, the earliest date, if I recall correctly, that's open, would be that very first week in March. Just to point that out.
I think you'll do a very good job on it, Howard.
Okay.
I don't understand what he said.
You do a good job.
Ms. Van Twyver?
I speak against this, because I think it should -- while I believe it probably fits in the budget committee, I don't want to miss the window of when we complete our work and accept the budget from the administration. I'd like to have this information as soon as we can have it, so that we know whether we want to -- we're going to approve belonging to the SBA, so.
Mr. Garino, do you want to speak to this?
I agree with Ms. Van Twyver.
Okay.
Madam President, I'll pull my motion if it's unpopular. I just thought it was the logical place to do it, to be more organized, and not to overburden the full board meetings.
I will say, I don't support it. I think we need to get them in here and make the decision. Listen to them and see whether we will keep that money in the budget or not. I don't know if you want to -- if you want to withdraw your motion.
That's what I said, because I don't --
But the second -- who -- did Mr. Kaufman second it?
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. So, we're back to the main motion?
So, we're back to the main motion.
Correct.
So, Mr. Mosher, on the motion?
Could we read the motion again, please, just so everybody knows? No?
Almost got it memorized.
Good.
I move to have the BOE ask a representative from the New Hampshire School Board Association to come and speak to us about the services and resources available to us from the NHSBA.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. The motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. Madam President, you will be arranging for that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Brentwood program is next, unfinished business. That has to be in non-public, so I would like to ask if we could adjust the agenda so that we can go on to new business at this point. Is there any -- can we do that by consensus? Everybody feel that? Okay, by consensus, we will put that at the end of the meeting for non-public. New business, acceptance of the New Hampshire DOE grant to provide services to prepare students for non-traditional careers in the amount of $9,870.91.
I move to accept the grant.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I will say, I want to thank the new CTE director at North, Amanda Bastoni, I'm sorry, for that. And I know that Dr. Maritaki would be pleased to see that, and that is the drone grant. Okay.
On the motion to accept the grant to provide services?
The DOE grant to provide services.
Right. To prepare students for non-traditional careers in the amount of $9,870.91. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
And Mr. Garino votes yes. The motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. And the superintendent's 100-day reflection has already been presented. Additional minutes to the 2017-18 calendar. Dr. Mosley, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, so, a couple of things. In working in collaboration with the NTU, adding seven minutes at the beginning of the day, and adding seven minutes at the end of the day, made it through a couple of our bargaining units, except for one. And part of kind of what I'm looking for is kind of the compromise of perhaps working through the secretary bargaining unit to allow us to make modifications to their particular work schedule or hours, so that they can recuperate or get some comp time, so that it works for this unit. This unit is actually paid hourly, and the way that the original proposal was written for seven minutes at the beginning of the day and seven minutes at the end of the day presented some challenges. So, part of what I'm looking for from the board is that I wanted to bring it back to the board, so that you're aware of this challenge, but also some flexibility to work with the NTU around these scenarios that were presented to you, so that it can work for the secretaries in our district. So, you know, I think Mr. Marku has outlined this pretty clearly. A yes vote would agree to change the workday or year, and give the secretaries some options, and they would select one of those options that were the most conducive for them. It's not part of the original agreement, so that's why I felt it was incumbent to bring it back to the board. So, if you vote no on it, then, you know, it's entirely up to the board where it wants to go with us.
Okay. Do we have a motion, or?
No, we don't have a motion.
Just discussion? Okay, Ms. Van Twyver?
I don't understand why the secretary -- I don't understand why the secretaries need this, uh, if you could, the complications that you mentioned, I'd like to hear about, but don't, aren't food service also hourly people, and would this affect them too?
Mr. Marku, I guess it'd be best for you to kind of come up and explain this, because we've been going on and on and on about this for quite some time.
So, out of the, oh, hi Jackie, it's Adam Marku. Out of the four units I represent, three are hourly, one is salaried, um, the teachers are salaried, the other three are hourly. The paras in food service, and please don't think I'm disrespecting the secretaries when I say this, play, um, a direct role in the services of students every day. So para educators are implementing I E Ps and helping with 504s and accommodating students. Food service is pretty obvious what they're doing, um, preparing lunches and food. Secretaries' days right now, if we add seven and seven, they're at school already when that time starts, if we push the start day to seven, uh, seven minutes earlier, that's already within their workday, and at the end, when we, if we increase the seven, that's already part of their workday. So, they have some flexibility to do the seven and seven with everyone else, if it works better for them to do that time at the end of the day because there's more going on, um, or come in and do the 14 of the start of the day because there's less people, that gives them the flexibility. Would I like to give all four units flexibility? Yes, it is impossible with the other three because of their direct services to students. I can't have teachers starting, um, during the 14 minutes in the morning, but the kids coming at normal time, it, it doesn't work. With this unit, it's not impacting the day for them, but it allows them to recoup the lost time if the other three units would have had and did this.
Any questions of Mr.?
So, I'll be voting against this, I, I believe that if we need an extra day, we'll grab an extra day, I'm of the mind now that, um, this adding minutes here at the end and the beginning of the day, really, I don't think it's going to provide any educational value to our students, two minute, in a, in a middle school with a seven periods, you've got two minutes of class at best, and I can't imagine what it would take to reprogram those bells to get that right. So, I'm not in favor of, uh, splitting the, I'm absolutely favor of no, no additional time from now until the end of the year, just allocate additional days as needed, at least the kids will get a full day of school, I don't think this proposal gives the kids any class time, thank you.
Ms. Hohency?
Thank you, um, I think there's a cost difference, I mean, last year we paid the, the, the paras, the food service and the secretaries extra money, I don't know, we didn't discuss last time what that dollar amount was last year, what it would be this year, so it's going to incur a cost to the district, and we don't know, there's going to be no cost?
So if I could just clarify, the costs that you're speaking of, I believe, and Mr. Donovan, it's his favorite topic, the costs that you, I believe you're speaking of, is the two days that the, we had waived, so there was no work for any employee, but they still got paid. This time is making up for days that we're, we're going to work anyways. I disagree that it would have been a cost increase on those two days in the past, because we budget a specific amount for every employee. So this is time, this is three of the six days we're talking about that we're making up by adding time to the school day. So you're taking those three days and spreading out that cost over the remaining, um, what, 80 days?
Okay, so you're saying these were two days that the department exempted?
Yes.
Thank you, that's great, that's good clarification.
And they were paid for that, yeah.
Okay, I still don't, I didn't get any parents that wrote me in, in support, and I agree with Mr. Kaufman that I, I don't think it adds to real learning for the kids, I think they get maxed out, adding extra time at the beginning and then they just are fried. They'll get much more real learning with a separate day, they come and rested, they get their meals, um, there's just a lot of benefits, the students have appointments and schedules that they've made months in advance, um, no parent that wrote me was, was happy about this change, so I'll be voting against it.
Anybody, Ms. Raymond?
So, just to clarify, because the, the, the email explanation, were the secretaries, are the secretaries losing pay on, by doing this, is that why they're, they were asking for an accommodation?
No.
Like the 10 and a half hours, okay.
There was no loss of pay in any of the proposals for any of my four minutes.
All right, and then the second question I have, um, is when we initially discussed this two, three weeks ago, um, it was to start two weeks ago on the 5th, and so now we are two weeks later, so that, my question is, when would this be implemented, and will this affect, how will this affect, uh, the tentative last day of school, and what happens if we get more snow days?
Well, I would say that, um, we want to give parents some time, so originally I had about two weeks out, so give and take, I'd like to have a two-week period, so I would probably say the beginning of March, if this went through, so it gives people an opportunity to plan accordingly. You know, I, again, I said, the word "snow" has become the bane of my existence, so I hope that there's no more snow days, uh, and, and, but, you know, there's always that April 1st, the April 1st day that happened in 1997.
Oh, I see.
With that said, um, I, 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 you know, it's totally up, up to you in terms of how you want to, to approach this, right now we're up to six snow days, and so, um, that's, you know, we're looking at getting at, I'm trying to get my calendar up here really quickly. I think it's, uh, um, try to get here. I get it right here, uh, you know, we had the 15th. Yep, the 22nd, so that's that Friday, so we're trying to recuperate as many, as much time back as we can, so, um, this is just something I felt that the board should, should, it should be aware of, um, whether you vote on it or not, it's, it's, I'll defer to you.
So, just to clarify, our last day as of right now with no changes is 6/22, which is a Wednesday or Thursday?
No, Thursday the 21st is.
I'm sorry, Thursday the 21st, if we were to vote on this proposal to start at the beginning of March, what would the last day be?
I'm thinking it would probably either be the 19th or the 18th, I haven't done the calculation yet, and I don't want to say it too publicly, publicly, because if we have another snow day, then that could affect the, the, um, the end of school.
So if we were to adopt it, we would still had to, have to add snow days for whatever comes up in the future? Okay, understood, thank you.
Ms. Van Twyver?
I'm still confused, um, what, what you're saying for the secretaries is that you're giving them the option of not working 14 minutes to the morning or afternoon, but giving them a 1.5 hours of comp time, is that what you're saying?
That's incorrect, so the options that the secretaries will have, and let me explain the comp time thing for a minute, so we based our calculations on seven-hour days, the elementary goes 6:52, and the middle school and high school go 7:08 or something like that, so we use seven hours, a Schedule 2 and Schedule 3 secretary's workday is 7.5 hours, so for every school day we make up using a base of seven, they lose .5 hours of pay, so that's where the 1.5 hours of comp time comes from, so to make them whole. So their options will be to work seven and seven like everyone else, add 14 minutes to the morning, add 14 minutes to the afternoon, or work an additional three full days at the end of the school year for a total of eight, and contractually they work five now, and that will make them whole.
Why do we give them an option here that we're not giving to the other places, just because you say that, like, food service has to be there at a certain time?
Yeah.
Certain time?
Yeah.
Jim, Jim is going to be mad at me, um, I, I don't know, I'm, I, I just don't know how to make this fair for everybody, but.
Mr. Donovan, do you want to explain something?
I just, gonna complicate this for you all.
Oh, thank you.
The reality of the seven and seven is hourly staff are paid on 15-minute increments, so if you're supposed to start at 8:00 a.m. and you punch in seven minutes before 8:00, you will get paid effectively at 8:00 o'clock, if you punch in eight minutes before 8:00, you will get paid an extra 15 minutes, so if I were to punch in exactly seven minutes before and seven minutes after as a secretary, I'll get no extra money, if I punch in eight minutes before and eight after, I won't get 15 minutes, I'll get 30 minutes, so, that's the seven-minute thing, I would suggest that the secretaries take on the 14-minute one, it would be a lot easier. But I can't tell them what to do, obviously.
But this gives, if we vote yes on this, it gives them the option of doing what they want.
Well, they can do the seven and seven, but if they punch eight minutes on one end and seven on the end, then they'll get the 15 minutes, it's just, it's just the way Cronos works, that's all.
And then, can I punch in 14 minutes before?
Yes.
So it's 14, just to clarify, you can do it 14 minutes at the beginning of your day, or 14 minutes at the end of your day?
Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at the moment.
Okay.
They said, uh, uh, between, uh, the union head there and the, uh, CEO, they, uh, seem to know what they're doing.
Ms. Raymond?
So I've just double-checked, oh, sorry, Mr. Mosher.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
That's okay.
Okay, are you finished?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you, um, so I've just double-checked on the calendar, and we're talking about the current last day being Thursday the 21st, but if we voted for this, it would simply be Monday or Tuesday of that same week.
Can I, can I just say possibly, because I don't, it, snow days, and that we have to do a recalculation in terms of when we implement this?
Okay.
So I said early March, and I have to get that exact date, and then I can get back to you, the, the worst thing that happens here, if you vote on this, it means the kids get out earlier from school, provided that we have no snow days, if you don't vote on it, then it becomes, uh, June 21st. Did I answer your question?
And graduation is on the 15th.
It's the week of the 15th, that, that week.
That Friday, or Saturday. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, but I, this is too much for my feeble brain.
Mr. Kaufman?
So thank you, Ms. Raymond, for, uh, that last statement, so if graduation, and I know high school is different, right, they have less, those kids have less hours, so what is the impact on the high school students in graduation?
They're graduating on that day.
But even though the, but the, so the last day of school is not the last day of school for the high school students, it's for the middle and the elementary?
So, the, we, we can't change graduation, though, because that's already planned.
I know, I know.
The seniors are going to walk across the straight stage and then they'll be done, and the juniors, sophomores, and freshmen will be here going to school.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I, I, I just want to speak to this, um, I, I voted for the seven minutes on either, and I didn't want 14 minutes for our high school students, they were, they were concerned about the beginning of the day, the late school people were concerned about kids getting out late at the late schools, and I understand that, plus I know a lot of people make dental appointments, doctor's appointments, have dance lessons, music lessons, uh, and, and things like that, and I'm concerned that our parents are going to feel like they've been in a position a second time to try to make, uh, adjustments in their schedules, so I am not going to support this, I think we took a vote on it, I voted for it, I wished it had, had passed the union, um, all, all of the union units, it didn't, but I, I can't support it because I think it has a lot to do with our parents and our families trying to arrange their schedules, so, thank you.
Call the question? You don't have a motion?
We don't have a motion.
All right. No, I'm, well, no, I don't want it, I'm not going to put it out there.
Well, can somebody make a motion to deny it, just so we have something on record, or is this consensus, does everybody feel the same way?
So if we make no motion, what's the result?
The result is, I'm sorry to cut you off.
I just want to know clarification, if we make no vote today, what happens?
Can I answer that question?
Dr. Mosley?
You've already, they already, in fact, you've already voted it down, so in fact, you don't really need to vote, I'm sorry, you already voted the approval of the seven minutes at the beginning and seven minutes at the end, so, you did, you, we voted for, I'm sorry, the board voted first, then it went to the bargaining units, and then, it has to make it through all four of the chambers of the bargain, bargaining units, it didn't, so there, so we go to the 21st.
So there is no agreement?
No, you don't need to do anything right now. You can use it as informational.
Mr. Kaufman?
So just for clarification purposes, if the board takes no action now, no motion, no action, there, it's dead?
Yeah, it's fine, thank you.
It's fine?
We can go on to another.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking to the motion, that should, time limits, that's, that should go to policy, and what I was looking for, uh, is to shorten board minutes and to limit discussions, so, whatever policy you can develop, and maybe we want to ask when the representative from the School Board Association comes down, maybe that's one of the questions we could prod him on, so, uh, if, if, I certainly would withdraw that going to policy if that needs to wait until we hear from the, whoever comes down from the School Board Association. Mr. Kaufman?
The question from the School Board Association is answered in the documentation given, sorry folks, the documentation given to the board by Dr. Mosley from the School Board Association has a specific answer to your question, if you look at page seven of that document, under Section D parliamentary procedure, it, uh, it addresses what you currently do, Madam Chair, is it, no member can speak twice on the same issue until debate, under debate until everyone else wishing to speak has, as, it's typographical error, I hate that, has spoken to it once, and then number six just under it, which is the, the proposal that Dr. Mosley made was to limit time and things like that, well, their comment from the School Board Association is number six, formality imposed by strict adherence to rules of order does not necessarily apply to small legislative bodies, so despite the Roberts Rules cited by Dr. Mosley is actually contradicted by the School Board Association's recommendation in that we're a small body, we wouldn't, they don't recommend this kind of, I'll just use the word "micromanaging," the time, I had to, I've been waiting a year to do that. So anyway, I just want to speak to that, so your answer, I think, is here, Ms. Oden.
Well, I spoke with Attorney Bolton about this, and he said absolutely, we could do this, uh, he said Roberts Rules can be very, very flexible, you can adopt what you want, and I think it would be up to the board, uh, listening to, to what we could come up with, so I, I think I would leave that open, and it could be a, a discussion at some point. Okay?
So are you referring that to policy then, or not?
It, it, to, to policy, but I would wait and, until, we don't know when the, when the, the, whoever's coming down, I, I know the last person was a gentleman, I shouldn't assume that, so, we could wait until that person comes and speaks to us, and we could bring that up and ask him, and then send it to policy, so we could, um, speaking to the time limit to policy, uh, probably you could put it at the bottom of your list now, because I know you have a whole lot to do, so, uh.
But we have to vote on that.
Okay, we'll vote on that. Okay, we'll vote on that. How many would make the motion? I would motion.
I move to send the topic of whatever, what was it? I lost my sheet of paper here.
Time limits?
Time limits to policy.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Van Twyver, did you want to speak to it?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, I think it's a really bad idea. We exist at the public for public information. Our, our job is to communicate to the public what we're doing and two hours is not too much of a burden. We took that on when we became board members. And I think we're shirking in our responsibilities if you're going to start cutting meetings short because of time. That's absurd. And I'll, on the committee, as a voting member, I will be voting against anything that looks like this. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Raymond?
Respectfully, I'd like to point out that since the public is invited to our meetings, we also need to be respectful of the public's time and the time of administration and students and staff who come to these meetings. It's not reasonable to have public sessions going till 10 or 11 o'clock at night on a consistent basis. So I think this is something that we should discuss in policy. I'd also like to point out that Roberts Rules of Order 42-1 suggests that all commentary by members of boards be limited to about 10 minutes and that each member speak twice. I think that it could be an appropriate challenge for us to limit our comments and be concise and efficient with our words.
Ms. Ohensie?
Thank you. I'm going to vote against sending it to policy. I think this board has existed without this rule for I don't know how many years. And it, what's going to end up is we're all going to have stopwatches timing each other. And if it applies to board members, it should apply to everyone else. It should apply to administration presenting to us. I mean, what are we going to do? I mean, it, it just sounds absurd. Are we going to do it to the public? And I believe there was a case that someone took to court and they won, that they, you can't restrict the public in, in terms of public comment. You can't overly restrict them. So I just think this is a poor idea.
Ms. Van Twyver?
I'd like to point out that our current policy for public is limited to 15 minutes, I believe. But I think this is a good idea to send it to policy. They can have a discussion and kill it in policy if they don't want to bring it forward or if they want to bring it forward, then that'll be it. But discussion needs to be had.
Mr. Mosher, do you have a commentary on this?
Yes, I think it's a wonderful idea because how many times we run over time and we're not restricting, if you have your head on straight and you know what you want to say, you can make your point in 10 minutes or less.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Yes, I think it's a good idea. We, we also have a obligation to be concise, to make sure that the business we bring before this board is about the business of getting on with the business of educating our kids. There's, there are too many, we go off on a tangent and we need to be, we need to be brief, concise, and, and on business. And, and that will help people bring to the board, you know, be serious about what you're talking about, make sure it's relevant, and, and not go on forever about other things. So I think it's a good idea. And as far as the law goes and the public, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's a different, that's a different story with, as Ms. Van Twyver said, there's a 15-minute limit. We already have that, so I think it's a good idea.
Okay, anybody else? Our student board member from, from south, Ms. Sweeney?
So I would like to note that, so, so far, there's been three meetings that Patrick and I have served on and we have not made it to the end of one. So, and just, we have people who have work early tomorrow morning. We have school at 7:20, I'll be at school at 6:50. They do, the board meetings do run late. Some of us still have homework when we get home. So I know it's just for everyone, it would be convenient to end at a more decent time, whether it be 9:30 or at least before 10:00.
Okay, let me see. I want to make sure everybody has had a chance to speak. Mr. Kaufman and then Ms. Van Twyver.
Thank you, and, and I appreciate that. The, the thing is, there's board business and then there's, I mean, we, tonight, for example, we had a very long presentation. There, there's the board comments and work reporting from committees and the few things we do at the end of the meeting. But if you look at tonight as an example, we had a very long presentation from Ms. Gingras, we had an interactive session, Dr. Mosley spoke for a while. That can't, that time can't count against the board because that's not the board talking. We have no control over those folks. So to Ms., Mrs. Ohensie's point, you would have to restrict Lisa Gingras to 10 minutes. You'd have to restrict Dr. Mosley's comments to 10 minutes. And that is the logical progression of what you're suggesting. And I just think you, let's go to policy, let's talk about it. Hopefully, some other people will come forward and we'll have a complete discussion.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes, I'd just like to inform the student members that we have always suggested that you leave at nine o'clock or earlier, that you do not have to stay for the whole time because we do know that you have to get up and go to school and do your homework. Do your homework, so. In case nobody told you, feel free to leave anytime.
Okay. Ms. Timmons?
I support time limits. We had a presentation and that presentation was on point, it was done and over with. It's the commentary after that, it's the driving force about how long we're speaking. And sometimes we speak longer than we need to. I counted some time last time, one person spoke almost one hour throughout the whole thing, no one else did. So we do need time limits because that's, that was uncalled for. So I support time limit.
Okay, any more discussion? Discussion closed?
Call the question.
Could you reread the motion, please, Mr.?
The motion is, speaking to the motion time limits, the motion was made to refer this to the Policy Committee. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Odin?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ohensie?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. The motion carries six to two.
The next item, I believe, is informational, tracking board requests to administration. It was asked for for, by Mr. Kauf, Kauf, Kaufman.
Yes, Dr. Mosley left the room, but he had previously made a commitment to make a presentation on this. So all I know is what's in the packet. This is an example of a request log from March of 2016, just about shortly after I arrived on the board. I will point out that 1602, the, the second blue item on there, take all the files from the existing policies and create PDFs and merge them into one file, has still not been done. So if this is the way we're going to proceed, fine, but it has to be used. My original proposal was for some kind of an online application where perhaps we could go to a web browser, enter the request, it's visible to everybody, so that would avoid Somebody's going to have to, that can be an electronic process. This is going to require work on the part of somebody to keep and maintain this list. My goal, when I originally made the request, was to have something that was electronic so there wouldn't be extra burden on anyone. And when I requested to meet with resources to do that, it was essentially denied and what we're offered is this spreadsheet.
Okay.
So if, if this can work, I'm willing to try, but I do have a question. What do we do with the outstanding requests that have been out there a while? How would we, who would, who would maintain this? I don't know.
Okay. Dr. Mosley?
Between the, the preparation of the board and what's going on in the budget, I don't, at this time, it's, it's a, it's a challenge to, to kind of understand where the extra resources will come. We're, we're flat out right now. Certainly, if there is, you know, a suggestion that was made in the past around finding someone to monitor this and to facilitate it, I'd be more than happy to, to do so. Just understand, again, it's not just the request of this board or the request of the budget, it's also the request of the curriculum evaluation committee, it's also the request of the plan, finance, and operations committees, there's also the request of curriculum and evaluation, policy. All of these requests are, are fast and furious coming to my office, which we organize, get the board packets together for all of those and then send out. In addition to that, I think this would be a little bit of a challenge and some of this is dating back close to two years ago. So certainly, we can do our best to, to try to organize this, but at this point, it's, it's going to present a challenge as we're involved in, in heavy budget requests where every single document that is going to be discussed, whether it's the presentation, whether it's, you know, the, the budget form that we developed, down to the, the appendix for the budget form, are all being photocopied, processed, organized, and out for the next month or so, just, just to comply with board, board request. My recommendation would be to try to, I would say, direct these requests to the, the proper committee so that it can be in the pipeline and eventually can go through the committee, through the committee work, it'll go to the board, and then there will be some type of determination.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes, Mr. Mosher had a, a good idea, I think, at one of our meetings. And the people who make the requests should keep their own log because this takes a lot of man-hours, as, as Dr. Mosley just said. So there's no reason why people on the board who make requests for information can't keep their own spreadsheet. And in that way, we don't, we're not using up valuable man-hours from the staff. So I, I thought that was a very good, a very good recommendation by Mr. Mosher, and I think that's what we should do.
Ms. Raymond?
So we have a, we have a policy that says that only thing that, all of our admin questions, all of our things that we would like people to do has to go through the superintendent and we can't just ask random people and admin. So having said that, I do think it makes sense to have some sort of tracking for those things so that we aren't each asking for the same information individually. I do think that some discussion at some point should be had about, should these requests be coming from, like, the board or should they be coming from individual policies? You know, I don't, I, I don't have a good understanding of what the requests are and why each one is being made, but it seems to me that, that we can get lost in the weeds if we don't know who's doing what. And I'm, I'm certainly concerned about overburdening our staff. So I think, so I don't know, maybe it should go to, I, I don't know where this needs to go, but I agree that, that it can be frustrating, I think, for staff and admin to be overwhelmed with requests, but also frustrating if there's a, a question that would help us to make a decision on a policy that we don't know the answer to. So, something.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Ms. Raymond, for your comment. Let's say I have a list of the things that I've already submitted to administration. The issue is not me keeping a track of my requests. The issue is the administration keeping track of the requests and the status of those things to get back to me on. That's what the issue is, is, and if you look at these columns, there's a date, how did the request go in, when was it requested, when did we expect to get an answer, when did we get an answer, and who made the request? Quite frankly, if we did them all by email to a particular, just as a thought, a suggestion, no, just throw this out, if we had a single email address that we sent these requests to, they would all be in one central place. We could all potentially have access to that and we could see what the list is that's in there. But there has to be a way for us as making, as someone who makes a request, to know, yes, it was been received, the request has been accepted and assigned to someone who's going to answer it. And then that person looks at it and determines, oh, it's going to take three weeks. And they get back to you and they say that's what it's going to take. It does us no good, I mean, I could, like I said, I, I have a list of things that I've asked for, but I don't have any acknowledgement of when they're going to be completed or when they would have been completed. And I'll talk about that when we go into non-public later on. So there needs to be an acknowledgement and a schedule given that's on the administration. So I'll, let me just ask this one, call it a hypothetical-type question. Should the board consider, since there's not enough admin resources, maybe what the board needs is some kind of administrative assistance that's dedicated to handling things like this for the board? And we could add that to the budget in our discussion. So I'll just throw that out as a possibility, as a way to address the shortages that the administration can provide us to service now.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Mosley?
The one thing I can say is that we can certainly receive requests. I think the challenge is going to be setting the appropriate time to follow through with some of these requests, and many of these requests have some overlap. Many of these requests sometimes fall in the realm of policy, sometimes they fall in the realm of, of curriculum, and sometimes they fall in the realm of, of finance, too. So it, it's, it's not a question of recording the request and, and it's, it's the challenge of when, when certain board members want the request to be followed through. And right now, you know, given everything that we're, in addition to these requests and preparing for this board meeting and subcommittees and finance committee, we are running schools. We are transporting and supervising 11,000 kids and parent, 22,000 parents out there communicating with us. We're a result, we are, we are running schools. So, and that's not just myself, but that's everyone in central office and, and, and the school district. So the, the remedy that I see is that there is, there should be some reasonable expectation in terms of when these requests will be processed, and some of these requests will need to be directed to subcommittees and within the district.
Ms. Raymond?
Well, I'm, oh, sorry, I'm wondering if, if, from our governance perspective, like, should we perhaps talk in policy about us having chairs be the ones to submit the requests or all requests coming from a certain person as opposed to having us kind of willy-nilly call and email when something crosses our mind? And I'm not saying that's what's happening, I'm just saying, like, in general, for efficiency's sake, could we consider, if it's a, if it's something that will help you make a decision about policy, perhaps the policy chair then, you know, sends that request and then there's an update, you know, at that meeting, the next meeting. Well, we have this outstanding business and that was information about this. I, I don't know, I'm trying to brainstorm while talking on how to make this efficient and less burdensome for everyone involved. Because I think, I think Dr. Mosley makes a good point. They have the business of running our schools and making sure our kids get what they need, but I imagine that some of this information is stuff that the board needs in order to make good decisions about policies that are going to affect how people do their jobs, too. So, I mean, they're both important.
Ms. Timmons?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Doc, doctor, I'm sorry, Mr. Kaufman. Clarify something you just said a moment ago, and that was if they would have somebody dedicated to, is that what I'm hearing, to do this policy? That's not what I'm hearing from you, is it? I'm not sure.
I was similar to Ms. Raymond speculating out loud of a possible solution, which would might be that the board hires an administrative assistant, lack of a better term, to help us keep track of things that the board may need. Requests are part of it. Could be scheduling, it could be, I don't know, I haven't really thought about what that role might be. That, I don't know if that answers your question or not.
So you advocating us spending money to hire administrative assistant instead of ELL teacher just to support that?
I didn't say that.
No, I'm just using it hypothetically. I know you didn't say that. But it, it- But it applies to hire someone else to, in our budget so we can support the board? Is that what you're saying? I'm just, I just want.
Yeah, that's, that's an option, perhaps, to be discussed. Let me just comment on what Ms. Raymond said. I think it's an interesting idea with moving these decisions into the committees. First of all, the committees meet once a month. So if it had any timeliness, urgency, or not even urgency, but any reasonable turnaround, you're at least a month or two out. And then if the board does go down the path of shortening the minutes, sorry, shortening the length of the meetings, we wouldn't even have enough time to deal with these requests. So I, I'll be happy to keep my own requests, I just want to know when they're going to be responded to and know that those dates will be committed to.
Thank you, Ms. Van Twyver.
Has not, has not been the case, and I'll demonstrate that later on tonight.
I think maintaining this file is not a terribly busy administrative task. I think the problem is getting the information compiled, assigned, or assigned to somebody and getting it compiled, and then getting back. I believe Kathy Wilde used to maintain this file, if I remember correctly, or, well, well, it says Tara here, but Kathy Wilde used to maintain a request for information. Mostly, I think, was data, but it looked sort of like this, and it kind of went by the wayside, I think, which kind of dropped using it. But I agree with Mr., Dr. Mosley, that, you know, filling out a lot of these things is going to take a little bit of time and puts a stress on, on the administration. But if it's information that the board needs, then I think this is the form, looks good to me, to be using, so.
I, I would just like to speak, I think, your phrase, that the board needs. And, and I think maybe some of this, I was looking, my, my name is on here three times for requests, and it had to do with when I was Chair of HR. And we were looking at some administrative positions to see who in the district was, was certified. I think, I think maybe if there was a need stated as to why, I think, as I said, looking at my name, nobody would know why I was asking for that, but it had valid reasons. So I think when anybody makes a request, they ought to state a reason why they need that information, because some of the, the requests look like they would be very time-consuming. I look at the, all the 2014 and 15 meeting minutes in Word PDF files on a thumb drive so one can make them into one file for searching ability. So I would, I, I understand that that is identified in there as to what it was requested and why, but I'm not sure that information would be wanted and needed by all board members.
Well, I'll tell you, that request was supposed to be implement, we were have, having a search routine implemented to go through all our documents.
Oh, okay.
And that was never satisfactorily supplied. So I think that's why maybe Mr. Kaufman requested a PDF file so he could search through it.
Okay.
But because the first request never got implemented correctly, that, I think that's why.
Okay, thank you.
And I see my name on here, too, and I don't even remember requesting this stuff. So I can see where some, some requests are maybe not as important as others.
But it was important when you made it.
Well, it was. Well, I think what, when that was, I was trying to find out what kind of training we provided our stu, our teachers with, for classroom management, but I don't remember.
Tracking board request administration. So at this point, my understanding, we're going to use this form for now. Dr. Mosley?
Can I just make an observation?
Excuse me?
Just a minute, we have side conversations going on, I'm sorry. Dr. Mosley? I'm just making an observation here. And understand this, we will track the requests, but right now, it is a challenge to get all of the board requests for, for the committees and for budget and for this, and for this meeting out to you in a timely manner. That's why you're getting your, find your, your budget requests and information tomorrow as it's going to go out. But I wasn't even here in 2016, and so you can see, 2, 3, 16, 2, 3, 16, just jumping down, 2, 19, 2, 9, 16. All of these requests are coming at the height of budget season. You gotta give, something's gotta give. So we'll take the requests, no problem, but to get back to you in a timely manner, you have to be, I'm asking the board to be very sensitive to when you're making these requests and understand that there are other things going on there, and that it might take some time to get those requests. It might take little time where, it might take a lot of time or some time, I really don't know. So the, I've requested the board understand that there needs to be some flexibility and the turnaround in getting the information back to all members.
Mr. Kaufman, can you keep it brief?
I'll be very brief on this.
Thank you.
So we should send them directly to you?
Send them directly to my office, Tara Rosi, and we will track the requests.
Okay, thank you. And will you please provide an update, updated sheet at each board meeting?
I can provide an updated, updated request if that's the will of the board.
Sure.
Well, yeah, we need to know where they stand and what the pipeline is. We may, if I see something on that list, I was, that's already there, I know not to make that request. So I think that will enable us to avoid duplication.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Raymond, did you have your hand up?
No, I mean, I think just printing it out for the board meeting isn't too onerous. And that also will allow board members to look and say, I don't remember that request, I no longer need it, please take it off. Or, you know, help us to prioritize perhaps which requests are critical for moving the district forward versus which ones, you know, really can wait for a little bit, so.
Ms. Ohensie.
Thank you, I just want to make sure for clarity, the answers to these requests will be given to the entire board, not just to the one member that.
Requested it.
That requested it. That way, if we see it on the list, we don't have to ask for it a second, you know, second, third time. It'll go to the whole board.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I would ask people to look at the clock. It is now eight minutes after 10:00. And we have people that have to be at work at 7:00, 7:30 in the morning. We have parents here. We have, have teachers here. So if we can finish up rather quickly, we have a non-public that we have, and we have to discuss the bandwidth situation, so I would ask that we move right along. Mr. Kaufman?
If I may, I'm happy to defer the conversation on the strategic plan to the next meeting, if I can, you know, just offer that to the Chair.
Thank you.
And in fact, the football safety conversation can also be moved to the next meeting. I have no problem. I did have a request for a personnel discussion. I, my original request is, was for a non-public session. For me, it's a, it's a matter I want to bring to the attention of the board. It's important, and I would ask that not be deferred any longer.
Let me, let me just say, the football safety discussion is going to policy, I'm referring that to policy, and the personnel discussion is going to be referred to HR. Anything to do with HR has to be, go through the, the human resources policy, and it's one of the, the top things on our policy, so.
Okay, that's fine, as long as I, I get that hearing immediately, it can't wait any longer.
Well, it's going to have to wait until HR.
Understood, it would be at HR, but I'm asking that the Chair schedule that into their next agenda, please. Thank you.
I, I don't know what's on their agenda, but it is up to the Chair. Okay, so now we're on public comments. Thank you, thank you for allowing the strategic plan later.
Strategic.
Policy.
Policy.
Clarify that, I don't want to, she's upset with me.
That's all right.
Oh, wait, oh, no, I have a whole thing to say, of course.
Adam Marqu, for Delorean Lane. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Charlotte Ave, and I also have the pleasure of serving as President of the Teachers Union. Tonight was a prime example why the board needs some direction and guidance from someone who doesn't sit on the board. After what I'm calling "the episode" this evening, I received the following email from a colleague and teacher in our district. She asked me to share it with you, because she's not here right now, and it starts with, "I'm embarrassed. There is no place for this in education. Who does this person think they are? I am so angry." Please let them know that you have received an email from a teacher who has lost confidence in the board as a governing body. Now, I've often spoken up here about various items, including this, and I'd like to acknowledge that it is not every member of the board, as I used to clump you all together. And I realize that it's not everyone. So I'm hopeful that when the School Boards Association comes, whether you go with them or not, they can offer some suggestion, or guidance, or help, or something to move this board forward, because it's, it's stuck in the mud. There was changes to the board, and it's the same old song. The, "I want you to know that social media is blowing up right now about this school board meeting. I just sit back and watch. It's embarrassing." And the, the teacher that said it said it all. So I hope that, I don't know, I've said it before for the last two years, and nothing ever changes. So here's hoping that next board meeting is better, because I had so much hope after the budget meetings. I don't know what, what happens from budget to full board to budget, but the budget meetings, you guys, you do awesome. And then you come here and you yell and scream at each other, so let's hope that ends soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marqu. Anybody else have public comments? Board member comments? I'll start over in this side. Ms. Timmons?
I'd like to apologize for the board. My expectation when I came on the board is to make sure that we work in harmony. Sometimes it's difficult, because everybody have difference of opinions, but mostly, I hope that people see some good that's on the board and not all bad. So I'm embarrassed as well, so that's my comment.
Ms. Raymond?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Garino?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I guess I should apologize, too, for raising my voice, but I, it, what bothers me is that people on this board do not respect the President of the board. She is control, she is to be in control of the meeting, and I hear her hitting the gavel, and, and people don't respect that. And I, and I think we need to respect that, and, and that's why I raised my voice, and I'm sorry I did. I was out of order, but when the gavel comes down, you're out of order also. So I think we need to respect that. We also need to respect, we need to respect the superintendent. And every time we, we make comments that really aren't warranted, we undermine, we undermine the morale in this district. We have a very professional staff, we have professional teachers, and, and we have to be careful about being accusatory and using accusatory rhetoric. So I, I just wanted to put that out there for people to think about. Thank you.
Over there, Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes. I'd like to say that I volunteer at a school in the after-school program, help out with the homework club, and I've noticed that my badge doesn't work anymore, and I'm just wondering if everybody has that problem, or you all do? I'd like to know what happened and why our badges don't work in the schools anymore. Dr. Mosley, can you answer that?
So do you want me to react to the comment from the school board? So my understanding, what's going on right now is that you're giving, like, closing comments. So do you want me to react to your comment?
Yes, sir, I do. I want to know why my badge doesn't work anymore.
So all badges, the employees that work in the schools have badges, I get them in. I don't, if you're asking me the question, "Did I deactivate your badge?", the answer is, "No, I did not give that directive." What I sent out an email today, just to clarify it, is that any, any school board member or anything, or even the assistant superintendents, even myself, should, should go through the main, go through the main office, sign in and get to the business that you want to do. One of the things, it's a safety issue. Our kids and parents don't know your face, they don't know my face, per se, and it's, and it's imperative to make sure that there's one area where not just school board members, but the superintendent himself signs in and notifies the office of our intent of our visit. Perfect example was today. I had my son who had to take, I had an appointment with my son, I went to the main office, I rang the doorbell at Fairgrounds Middle School, I was buzzed in, I went into the main office, I signed in, and I waited for my son to come out, and I took him to the doctors, and then I came back. When I came back, I actually got a call today from Fairgrounds that my daughter was sick. So again, the intent of my visit is not as a superintendent, but as a father. But still, I rang the buzzer, signed in, and picked up my daughter and, and went and took her home. So I, I don't think this has been any change, and I think it's important that we make sure that we follow safety and protocol procedures, because we don't want people, not just myself, but we want to make sure that the kids and, and our own faculty follow protocol entering the building and exiting as well.
Well, Mr. Mos, Dr. Mosley, for, ever since we've had this system, we've had our badges work, and I always sign in when I go to visit a school. Now, you talk about safety, but you can walk into this school anytime during the night, and nobody's checking you. You could spend the whole night here. And when I do the after-school program, when I ring the bell to get me in, sometimes it's a young child that comes to open the door for me, who doesn't know me from Adam. So this safety thing is not, I, I, I really take it offense at the fact that I'm not a respected member of this board, that I have to ring a doorbell to let myself in. Now, I have always signed in, I volunteer at Amherst last year, and I'm volunteering at Crisp, Dr. Crisp this year. And the fact that we were not even alerted to the fact that this was going to happen is offensive to me. And the fact that you didn't, somebody under you had the nerve to go and turn us off and not tell us about it. I, I think that's very disrespectful and not transparent. And I wish that you would tell this person that they had no right to do it, and that you would reverse this procedure of not allowing us to get in with our badges. I don't like standing out in the cold waiting to get in to help. You're discouraging people from volunteering, as far as I'm concerned.
You can walk into this building now, because there's no kids in here.
Right.
And that's, that's, and it's open, meaning, it's open to the public. I, I guess I'm a little bit befuddled by, by asking people, of everyone, including myself, everyone in the entire district, everyone who's sitting in this audience, to follow a safety protocol to entering and exiting the building. So I respectfully disagree with you.
Well, sir, excuse me, can we? Well.
Thank you.
I would like to have this, I, why wasn't the board informed, Mrs. Oden? Why was not the board informed that this was going to be, happened, that this was going to happen? That's what I want to know why.
I don't know, and I don't know who made the decision. I don't know how it happened. I asked Dr. Mosley the other day, and he said he did not ask that the badges be deactivated. I did see in the policy the other day, which surprised me, if a teacher from another building goes into a building that they do not teach in, they have to, I don't know if they, they have to swipe in, I don't know if their badge works at another school, but they have to go to the office and sign in, too. That's in the safety, the safety policy.
I am not objecting to that, Mrs. Oden. I signed in every time when I volunteer, and every time I visit a school, I signed in. But the fact that I'm not able to use my badge just to walk into the building.
Okay.
I think is unfair and disrespectful to this board that we
-I think is unfair and disrespectful to this board that we were not informed that it was going to be happening.
Uh huh. Oh, I, I understand where you're coming from on that point. Mr. Kaufman, do you have anything?
Yes, I have a prepared comment. Please be patient. Last year's, and this is important. This is intended for the public.
How long is it?
I don't know. I don't know how long it's going to take, but I'm-
Is it like three pages, four pages?
It's never more than one page. I can tell you that.
Okay.
Can you do a double speed?
I, I could speak quickly.
Thank you.
Okay. "Last year's election in Nashua demonstrates the power of the organized, well-funded, and motivated public employee unions that work in the Nashua School District. In this case, the collaboration of the Democratic Party, the teachers' union, and the six other unions brought monumental change to the city. All it took was 5,000 votes, easy to do with 2,000 employees, their families, and friends. Really easy to do in an off-year, non-presidential congressional election. If you blinked, you may not have noticed that the Democratic Party and the teachers' union succeeded in taking over, actually performing a coup of the Board of Education. That's where we are today. All four candidates elected in November received teacher union support. Some took money, all received support at the polls and in mailings from the unions and/or the Democratic Party. The sad part is that decisions made at the Board of Ed will be made based on ideology and not on a well-informed decision process. The ideology is very simple. Isolate, negate, ignore, criticize, and shun the effort of board members not-union aligned. Support whatever the union and administration wants. Give more money to union salaries at the expense of classroom needs. And number four, reduce or eliminate discussion at board meetings and committee meetings. We've heard a lot about that tonight with reducing times and meetings. This has already happened. You see, the fix is already in. The decisions have already been made by the union who's pulling all the strings and the administration who wants to assert unlimited control over the board. It was done tonight with agenda item to limit board discussion. The price for all this control will be paid by the taxpayers and our young people. The price will be a budget that far exceeds the spending cap and the mayor's recommendation. The price of peace will be the continuation of poor-performing schools because criticizing school performance, procedures, and operations will move from being micromanaging to becoming hurtful and offensive instead of the constructive criticism that it is. It's no coincidence that the teachers' union contract was immediately approved once there was a legal negotiate, negotiation team in place and a new board assembled to vote on it. It's no coincidence that inexperienced board members were given key negotiation assignments. Here are my top seven predictions. All agenda items will be controlled and manipulated. Only topics of interest to the union and the administration will be brought forth for a vote. You will see the motion to postpone indefinitely used often to lock out discussion. Discussions, discussions about transparency and accountability will be interrupted and stopped. Public committee meetings will be shortened. We've already talked about that tonight. Less information will be discussed. And there will be a shift from public discussion to private meetings for the select few with the administration in order to circumvent right-to-no laws. Six, legitimate board information requests to the administration will be dismissed, ignored, lost, forgotten, or blocked. The unfair comp-, number seven, the unfair competency grading system we use at the high school will never be discussed again despite last year's student pronouncements of the unfairness in the context of a grievance. Sadly, there still has been no discussion. This hostile, quote, bullying board situation completely undermines the basic premise of a deliberate, deliberative body making informed decisions. It represents the undermining and complete rejection of our representative form of government. Welcome to the new Nashua School District. In, in our next meeting, I will be answering Mr. Marqu's question about trust. In closing, I want to invite members of the public to attend all board and committee meetings. We represent you, and it's time for your voice to be heard. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Ms. Ohensy?
Thank you. I've got a couple of short items. I agree with Mrs. Van Twyver. I didn't get the email. I just checked. I think we're given badges. We should be told if they're operable. And I hope that they get put back as soon as possible. I got a text message tonight from a teacher concerned about seniors and state law, that they have to have 175 days prior to graduation. I don't need an answer tonight. I just hope that you'll look into it so our seniors don't have a problem graduating. I'm disappointed with the way the board is going. We had a split last year before the election. It was five, four, four, five. And I know the administration sometimes gets involved and tries to pit board members against the other. I've seen that. But this, this is, is out of, is out of control. We're being pressured by the superintendent to do something on governance. We are being pressured to shorten our meetings. We're being pressured not to deliberate as much. We're being told that we're out of order. The superintendent even told one of our chairs, when he called a member out of order, that the member had the right to speak against the chair who was calling her out of order. So, you know, it's not just bringing an outsider in here and saying, this is how you govern yourselves. Are we going to agree to that, number one? I mean, right now, it's just common sense. The superintendent doesn't override a chair, and yet it happened. So this whole thing needs to calm down a notch. There has to be more respect. We've got backlogs on policy committees, and we're trying to shorten our committee time. Where's common sense? You know, maybe things need to slow down. Maybe we don't need to pack our meetings so full. If we've got so much on these meetings or in policy committee, maybe there needs to be more short meetings. Somehow, we shouldn't be fighting about this. We should find some common ground, some common solution, and maybe peace will come to the district. Thank you.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any comments?
I will withhold my comments for the time being.
Okay. When I was nominated to be president, I said I wanted to see a board that was collaborative, worked with respect, and worked with efficiency at meetings. I've seen that throughout all the governance documents that I have received from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. I apologize for tonight. I, I thought it was a terrible embarrassment for our district. It bothers me to be part of this. Quite frankly, as president, I, I feel even worse. And that's why I asked for the five-minute recess. I think all people on this board ought to be respectful of every individual at this horseshoe. We owe that as, as human beings, not even the fact that we're public officials. So I, I, I am embarrassed and I apologize to anybody who's watching this tonight. I will say, I think I heard Mr. Kaufman say that all four members that got reelected were supported by the Democratic Party.
And/or the union.
Oh, okay. Because-
Or receive help at the polls, is what I said.
Okay. Because I, I, I want people to know, I took no money from anybody. I did not, I did not accept any money. I filled out the union form and sent it back like anybody else did as a former teacher. I wasn't surprised that I had their support. So I, I, I think there is, I know there is a definite split on the board. And I think we have to, to me, we need governance, absolutely, to, to see if we can't find a way that we can work together collaboratively for the, for the good of our students. This is what we ask of students, to work together and be respectful. And I think we should, we should do the same. So. Heather, you can speak. I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't mean to speak before you. Okay. Thank you.
That's fine. I will keep it brief and concise. I just would like to say that I am, I'm particularly concerned at the personal attacks that continue to happen by board members in general. The suggestion that being new should somehow mean that we are either irrelevant or were purchased by someone is, is personally offensive to me. I mean, I think everyone who runs for public office and everyone who especially wants to be on the Board of Education cares deeply about the children of our community. I would hope that the 5,000-plus people who came to the polls and voted for me personally did so because they found something in me that they supported. If that's not the case, that's not the case. But I like to believe that my sincerity on the campaign was what led to me personally being here. I have seen individual members of this board reaching out to other individual members, trying to bridge the gap, acknowledging when there is something important that they have said, acknowledging that there are things to work on. And then I see others who have difficulty giving people the benefit of the doubt or even, even, even treating them with respect. And it's, it's particularly concerning to me. And it's concerning to me, it's just really concerning to me. And the irony of calling other people hostile or bullying while behaving in that manner was not lost. So I'm, I'm really disappointed in this experience. I'm disappointed in, in the fact that we continue to go round and round about this. We all want a reasonable, efficient budget, but we are not employees of the mayor. That's, that's not our job. Our job is to advocate for the students of this district. And should we do that in an efficient manner? Absolutely. We need to be fiscally responsible. But first, we need to hear what's needed. And to make wild accusations about what people are going to do is not helpful, and it doesn't move the board forward. And I am so sad to hear this tonight. So I do hope that this will be the last time that we have conversations like this. And it's starting Wednesday at the budget. We can start fresh again. And perhaps having some governance will help us to resume acting like adults who respect each other. Thank you.
Okay. We need to go into non-public to discuss the Brentwood situation. I'm looking for a motion.
Mrs. Oden, can we have a quick break?
Uh.
I'll just go and come back. You could start. I don't care.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public session. Wait.
RSA.
Under RSA 91A-
Three, two-
Three, two E. Oh, two C?
Two C is what we used.
Okay, two C.
There's not litigation here. And, and I, that, I'm looking for a second.
I second that.
Second. Okay, voice vote. Ms. Oh-
I'm sorry. The, the motion is to go into non-public. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman is not here. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Ohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino, yes. So the motion carries.
At ten?
At ten, ten thirty-five.